I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Parker.
William.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Gussen.
Here.
Councilmember Hona.
Here.
Councilmember Katz.
Councilmember Topler.
Here.
Mayor Hamidine.
Here.
Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by Resolution 28-12, setting the 2012 meeting dates, sending a copy to the record and the Jewish Standard, filing a copy in the Township Clerk’s office, and posting it on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, and the mayor hereby directs that this statement be included in the minutes.
Good evening, welcome to tonight’s meeting. For the record, we also have with us our Township Manager, William Brownton, his executive assistant, Isa Abasi, our Township Clerk, Jamie Avellina, Senior Clerk Jennifer Jackson, and William Brownton, I mean Stanley Turrets from Farrar, Turra, Turackan, Goldberg. Tonight is late night voter registration. It’s the last opportunity to register for the upcoming primary election, which will take place on June 5th. Teaneck Clean and Green Weekend will take place on Saturday, May 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Argon Park, Brooks Park, and Coolidge Park, and Sunday, May 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Brett Park, The Burial Grounds, and Municipal Green, and Turhune Park. For further information, please check the website. Teaneck Sedolane Family Festival will take place on Monday, May 28, 2012, from 11:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., rain or shine. Please be advised that there is an ongoing blood drive for the township employees. The blood drive is taking place at Bergen Community Blood Center at 970 Linwood Avenue, Paramus, New Jersey. Please call 201-444-3900 to make an appointment. All necessary information will also be on the website. The next televised council meeting is scheduled to take place on May 29th, with public input to begin at 8:00 p.m. Council met in closed session to discuss interviews for the Votee Park Advisory Board, Shetree Advisory Board, and Parks and Recreation, and we also discussed labor negotiations, as well as the clerk’s evaluation, and an offer to purchase township property. First item on tonight’s agenda is presentations. We have a proclamation for Councilmember Yit Stern, and we have a proclamation for certificates for volunteerism for Councilwoman Lizette Parker and Councilwoman Barbara Lee Topler. If you guys would like to join me off the dais, please.
I will not, thank you.
For you. Your board.
Um, I choose not to accept it. I’ve got my pen.
on April 29th, the state of New Jersey Governor Chris Christie issued a statement to mark Holocaust Remembrance Day, and Councilwoman Stern was nominated to the New Jersey Education Commission on Holocaust Remembrance. Did I say that correctly?
Education on Holocaust Remembrance.
Education, sorry. So, I’ll just read the bottom of it. Now therefore be resolved that Township Council and the Township of Teaneck and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey hereby recognizes Councilmember Emilia Stern on this prestigious appointment, and hereby acknowledges his efforts to our township and the people at large, desired by myself, Mohammed Hamidine Dean, Mayor Adam Gussen, Councilman Ellie White Katz, Councilwoman Mammon Kohonis, and Councilwoman Lizette Parker. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. A lot of things.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the proclamation, Mayor. You know, the issue of Holocaust education, genocide education, is a very important issue in the state of New Jersey. The state of New Jersey, actually, our school district right here in Teaneck was the first school district to begin talking about, along with one other down in South Jersey, to talk about Holocaust education back in the days of Governor Kane, at which point the Commission on Holocaust Education was put together and established by the governor under the Department of Education. I was very honored and to be asked to join it. As a child of survivors, as well as an educator myself, I think it’s important that we perhaps perpetuate the educating people about the Holocaust, as well as making sure that we continue to live in an inclusive, diverse, and tolerant society, something that was the basis for the Holocaust. So, thank you again to all that issued the certificate, the proclamation, and thanks.
Congratulations. And, our next congratulations is to Councilwoman Lizette Parker. The council would like to extend a heartfelt recognition to Board of Education Honorary Councilmember Lizette Parker for your continued volunteer service and ongoing dedication to the Teaneck Public School System. I’d like to take this time to just recognize Councilwoman Parker and Councilwoman Topler, Councilwoman who both worked with the Youth Advisory Board, which, one thing that we can agree unanimously over the last my four years is her work and her dedication to the Youth Advisory Board. She’s created some great citizens who are going to come back and do great things in Teaneck, as well as in their college life. If I can embarrass my colleague, it is also her anniversary, so I’d like to wish her a happy anniversary to her and Tony. Without further ado, Councilwoman Parker. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, and, I mean, I can’t even speak. This is a day full of surprises for me. My job gave me a surprise baby shower today, so I’m like a little bit thrown off, and I just want to wish my husband, who’s watching, a happy anniversary. And I want to thank the council for this proclamation, and I also would like to thank the Board of Ed, who I think the only representative that’s here, Howard, and Dr. Henry Pruitt, that were here today, for recognizing the work that I’ve done with the Youth Advisory Board. But it’s not just me as an individual, it’s all the adult advisors that I work with, Scott Pleasant, Tara Edmonds, Keisha McLean, and David Hyatt, and also Sebastian Rodriguez, who sits as a board representative. But it’s also through the support of the council members, who every time I bring something to them, they always willingly support, as well as the manager and our clerk. And Isa, I can’t thank you enough over the last couple of weeks with the D.C. trip. This was not something that I ran on when I ran, it was something that was given to me from God, I believe, a passion to work with our youth, the future of our society. And it’s my honor and my privilege to work with our future citizens, and I look forward to them coming in, and in a couple of weeks, and letting us know their thoughts and desires of what they would like to see in the town. Thank you again, and thank you.
Next item on tonight’s agenda are fire promotions. Township Manager, William Brownton.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This evening, we’re here to promote several of our firefighters to the various ranks. I’d like to welcome you all here, and welcome the firefighters, and welcome their families as well. We appreciate you very much. So, let’s start with Lieutenant Nguyen. Lieutenant, Lieutenant Nguyen, you want to come up? Come up with your family.
In 1983, Lieutenant Nguyen was hired by the Teaneck Fire Department as a firefighter, and was later promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Lieutenant Nguyen is being promoted tonight to fire captain. In attendance tonight are Donald’s wife, Grana, Granja, daughter Fiona, son Liam, and father Don Nguyen. Don Nguyen is one of our former fire chiefs, and we’re happy to have him here this evening. Chief, welcome. Donald, Lieutenant Nguyen, he’s a graduate of Teaneck High School, and also holds an associate’s degree in fire science, and a bachelor’s degree in criminal justice. Lieutenant Nguyen’s, as I said before, Lieutenant Nguyen’s father is a retired chief, fire chief, he retired in 1989. Lieutenant Nguyen’s achievements include having worked on the hose repair project and computer implementation with the fire department. So, Lieutenant. Captain now.
Not yet.
So, you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand.
I state your name.
I, Donald Nguyen.
Duesolemy swear.
Duesolemy swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of battalion chief.
Of the office of fire captain. I promoted him about two extra ranks.
Of the office of fire captain.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have family? Any family? Okay, just your son, okay. Okay, Christopher Robbins. He was hired by Teaneck Fire Department in 2001 as a firefighter. Firefighter Robbins is being promoted this evening to fire lieutenant. Chris and his son James, who’s in attendance this evening, live in Dumont. Firefighter Robbins graduated from Jersey City State College with a degree in applied science. His notable achievements include being an instructor at the Bergen County Fire Academy since 2007, and working with the Firehouse Magazine since 1999. All right, this time I have the correct oath of office. All right? You put your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Christopher Robbins.
Duesolemy swear.
Duesolemy swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of lieutenant.
Of the office of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You want to come up? Okay, Brian Dolch. In 1995, Brian was hired by Teaneck Fire Department as a firefighter. Firefighter Dolch is being promoted tonight to fire lieutenant. In attendance this evening is his wife Jennifer, daughter Jillian, son Joseph, and father and mother Fred and Carol. Firefighter Dolch’s family have a very extensive history here in Teaneck. Firefighter Dolch is a graduate of Teaneck High School. His mother Carol is a retired Teaneck librarian, and his father Fred is a Teaneck greenhouse member. Brian’s great uncle is a retired Teaneck Fire Department Deputy Chief. His great uncle retired from the Teaneck Fire Department, and Brian’s grandfather Fred is a founding member of T VAC.
I state your name.
I, Brian Dolch.
Duesolemy swear.
Duesolemy swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of lieutenant.
Of the office of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, Joseph Zabierski couldn’t be here this evening. In 1994, Captain Zabierski was hired by Teaneck Fire Department as a firefighter, and in his 18 years of service, was promoted to lieutenant and captain. Captain Zabierski is being promoted this evening to battalion chief. Joe, his daughter and wife could not be here tonight because of a family illness out of state, unfortunately. Captain Zabierski is a graduate of Teaneck High School, and a member of the fire investigations team.
Good evening, council. Good evening, residents. I’d just like to congratulate these three firefighters. Once again, one of the themes of the fire department, as well as the police department, is service in the town, and as you see in Lieutenant Dolch and Captain Nguyen, they’re generations of service to the Township of Teaneck. This one’s especially important to me, as Donald’s father hired me. Chief Nguyen hired me in 1987, so it’s an honor to be here to see his son get promoted to captain, and I want you again to understand the sacrifice that these firefighters do for you. We appreciate that their families allow them to come and help us serve you, residents, and we’ll continue to serve you proudly. Thank you.
Name from council? Councilmember Stern?
Yes, congratulations to all the promo-tees, or whatever you would call them. I want to give a special shout-out to Lieutenant Robbins, who is one of our fire instructors up at the academy. I see him pretty often, does a great job. The staff was very excited to hear about your promotion, as you know, and I’m sure Chief Rasch would have been here, but he probably has other stuff to do, and, you know. So, congratulations to all of you, and we really look forward to your continued service for many years.
Anyone else?
Congratulations.
I’m glad Chief Verley said what he said when he said his congratulations. You know, we always congratulate the men when they get their promotion, and in the police force, the women when they make their promotion, but we really cannot forget the sacrifices that their families make, because on Christmas, when they’re serving the Township of Teaneck, their families are home without them. Thanksgiving, any holiday, so we really have to appreciate the fact that their family is willing to share them with the entire township, and that’s one of the things that makes Teaneck so special, because as you’ve heard from people who spoke tonight, the Teaneck people have a way of giving back, not once, not twice, but it’s a multi-generational thing, and that’s something we must always be proud of. So, again, I say thank you to all the men promoted, but just as big a thank you to their families.
Yes, and I would also like to offer my congratulations to all of the men, to all of their families, and as always, my admiration to Chief Verley, who I think with all of you make us so very proud of Teaneck. You are an extraordinary fire department. Thank you all very much.
Gentlemen, on behalf of the Township of Teaneck, I’d like to congratulate you on your families. You guys have put in a great career, and we thank you so much for all of you do, all the firemen in present who are here. I’d like to give you all a round of applause. Teaneck is very lucky to have you serving us. Thank you so much. And the next item on tonight’s agenda is a solar presentation from New Jersey. Is anyone here? Oh, wonderful.
You guys want to get set up? Good evening. I am Michael Shannon, President of the.
I’m sorry, Mr. Shannon, if you could address council?
Can we just, we wait just a moment for the chamber to clear?
Excuse me for the.
Feel free to move the microphone however high you need it.
That’s all right.
Isa, can you put the.
The main speaker is a few inches shorter than I am, so it’s going to work. Don’t raise it up, because you’re going to have to put it back down. Okay.
Thank you. If you could just address council, thank you.
I was going to thank you, just a minute. Sorry for the breach in protocol. I am Michael Shannon, President of the Northern New Jersey Community Foundation, which is working with six communities in northern New Jersey, including Teaneck in a number of ways, but tonight, we’re here to talk about one of the ways, and that is a solar project that we have underway. So, we’re here to explain that to you. I have handouts, and for you to ask questions about it, to, just so you’re comfortable with what we’re doing. With me tonight is our Associate Director, Danielle De Laurentis, and Lynn All Grant, who is a board member and councilwoman at large on the Englewood City Council, and the most informed person on our board on solar energy matters. So, between us all, we hope we can answer your questions. I want to thank you, the council, the mayor, and the city manager for this opportunity. And at this point, Lynn, carry on.
Do you have those handouts for us that we can?
Yeah.
Thanks. If you could just give it to the clerk. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting us. On behalf of the Northern New Jersey Community Foundation and the City Council of Englewood, I’m delighted to be here and talk to you a little bit about a project that we’ve been working on. One of the goals of the Northern New Jersey Community Foundation is to figure out what can we do together that would be more difficult for us to do alone? And the foundation has carved out a catchment area of six communities surrounding Englewood, and one of the first projects that we’ve decided to undertake is a joint solar project. And after doing quite a bit of research, we decided that the best course of action for us to pursue is a power purchase agreement, a PPA. And as you’re probably familiar, the way that that works is that we invite a for-profit company to install solar panels on our roofs. We enter into an agreement to purchase our electricity from those solar panels. The incentive for private companies is that there are a lot of tax rebates right now, and other federal incentives to get in the business of solar. Their additional incentive is that they receive the SREC.
Solar renewable.
Yes, so no, solar or sustainable renewable energy credits, which are traded on the open market like stocks and bonds. So, they assume the risk and potentially the benefit of operating in the SREC market. What it allows us to do as government entities is to install solar, to have solar panels installed at no cost to us, or very low cost to us, and to enter into a purchasing agreement where we’re buying our electricity at a fixed rate, and right now at a dramatically reduced rate than what we could receive on the open market. The reason that the Northern New Jersey Community Foundation is interested in this is because it allows us to try out an opportunity for multiple municipalities and school districts to work together on a particular project. And one of the reasons, as we did our research, that we realized that a solar power purchasing agreement would be more beneficial to the entities in working together is the larger the package we could put together, the more roofs we could put together, the bigger player we are in the field, and we can attract stronger companies, we could attract a better deal. And so, there are a lot of economies of scale that accrue to us by working together. Recently, the city of Hackensack put out an RFP, I think about six or eight months ago, just with a few roofs that they had, and they got no bids. As you may know, the SREC market kind of fell quite dramatically last summer, and a lot of private companies were hanging back, and small projects no longer seemed attractive to them. And so, although Hackensack was ready, it had roofs that were ready, they had the plans, they had everything ready to go, nobody was interested in doing such a small project. What we think, and what Hackensack thinks, is by joining with us and putting together a megawatt system, as opposed to a few kilowatt systems, is that they’ll be able to attract those bids. One of the things that we put together for you, and I have to thank the Teaneck Public School District for providing data, as you know, they completed a solar power purchasing agreement last summer, and the panels are up, and I’m sure that you’ve got students probably studying the efficiency of the panels, and they were very lucky, I think, in their timing, because they got a terrific deal, even as the SREC market was tanking. But their current deal is that they’re purchasing their electricity from the solar panels on their property at 8.5 cents a kilowatt hour in the current year. It is a 15-year deal, and their final price will be 14 cents a kilowatt hour, which, in fact, their 15-year price is the price they were paying last year, from whoever was their energy supplier. And so, I did a little bit of work for the Bogota School System for a presentation that we were making to them, in looking at their current electricity bills, what they were currently paying a kilowatt hour, and what they would be paying if they had the deal that the Teaneck schools had. And so, in your chart, I put a little spreadsheet together for you. If they could get 100% of their energy from the solar panels at 8.5 cents a kilowatt hour instead of 11.8 cents, which is what they’re currently paying, they would save 28%, and over the course of a year, almost $24,000. Solar panels are quite efficient, but we have cloudy days, we have rainy days. So, then I ran it, if, let’s say that we are able to draw 80% of the electricity needs that we have on any particular building from the solar panels, their cost savings would be 22%, and almost $20,000. So, our goal is to do a couple of things. To reduce our electricity costs, in Englewood and Englewood Public School District, we happen to have joined the New Jersey Sustainable Energy Joint Meeting, so we’ve been actually getting a pretty good electricity price the last couple of years. So, I’m not positive that the first year of the solar contract is going to dramatically reduce our electricity bills in the power purchase agreement. However, the great thing about a power purchase agreement is that we lock in the price for the 15 years. And so, rather than having to go along with the vagaries of the market, even in a joint power purchasing agreement, we would actually know what our electricity price was for the energy that we were purchasing through the solar panels. Gives us a little bit more stable price to anticipate. Obviously, we think solar is a good thing, and roofs are there, and if they can generate energy, that’s a good thing for all of us. It sends a very positive message, I think, to our citizens, that we’re really trying to bend the cost curve, and to bend the wastefulness in the way that we run things. And then, it. And then it also gives us an opportunity to start to work together. And what we're hoping is that this will be the first of many projects that give us the opportunity to sit down and say, what are you working on? What are high priority issues? How might we, as a school district or a township or neighboring townships and schoolship—and school districts, how might we work together? So that's our goal. The city of Englewood has agreed to be the lead agency, which means that we'll handle a lot of the paperwork and other kinds of things through our city hall and through our city manager. We're delighted to say that we currently have six entities that are very interested and are going through the exercise that you're going through tonight. Englewood has already agreed on the municipality to join. The Englewood School District is going to join, Bogota School District is going to join. We're looking at you guys and Hasbrook Heights. And we think that it will be kind of a novel opportunity for us to show that even here in Bergen County with our 70 municipalities, we can occasionally sit down together and work on something as a group. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll try—I'm not sure I'm a solar expert, but I'll give it a shot if you have any questions. Yeah.
I actually don't have a question. We did meet once—
Yes.
At a Sustainable Jersey meeting.
That's right, yes.
It is delightful—
I know, here we are, finally.
Well, here we are. Unfortunately, I will be stepping off the council in six weeks, so I will look forward to working with you as a resident. I am so excited that you are doing this. It has made me very sad that this council was not eager or interested in participating with the school system on this. And I am hoping that they will take a very different attitude in working with you. I was so impressed—I was so impressed with you. You know, I sent you an email after we met just to say, hey, do you have time for lunch, which I don't think you did.
I know, yeah.
But it was—you know, I was impressed with the group. I'm thrilled that you're taking this forward movement. I hope that this council will say, this is the right time to be doing this, will continue our move on Sustainable Jersey and on—you'll become involved in all of the many projects. I just got a very nice email from Michael Rogvin, who is the head of our group. So I urge everybody to support this, please. It is the wave of the future, and it can save so much money. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a couple. Thank you very much for undertaking this and for bringing this here tonight. When—I think it was probably about five years ago, this council began to look at solar. At that point, we embarked on a project for the ROTA Center and for the firehouse at TNEC Road in DeGraw. There were several options and models available then. Obviously, the market is different today. But ultimately, what we determined was that the power purchase agreement made a lot of sense for businesses and for school boards, but less sense for municipalities.
Oh, interesting.
Because of the ability to bond—
Yep.
We were able to secure far better financing. You know, when you look at the negotiated rate per kilowatt hour over a long period of time, obviously, that budgeting smoothing is a valuable thing. But in that rate is the power provider, is their profit margin. And basically, what they're doing is financing or leasing the equipment and selling you the energy at a rate less than maybe what you pay today, but more than what the energy actually costs. And so with the municipality's ability to bond, we, at that point, made the decision that we weren't going to enter into a power purchase agreement, we were actually going to pay for the—
Sure.
—solar cells ourselves.
Right.
And so I guess my question is, are municipalities and school boards, are they a natural fit in this? Or because of the financing difference—the law is involving school board finance and municipal finance—are school boards amongst themselves a better fit as a group versus municipalities as a whole? Where, you know, where is that at today as far as the nature of the PPA agreements that are out there?
Sure. One of the things—and as you probably know, New Jersey is kind of cutting edge, like we're second only to California, which is pretty exciting. One of the really interesting initiatives that happened is called the Morris County Project or the Morris County Agreement, might even be called the Morris County Miracle. I think that's what the private companies feel like. And what they did in Morris County is they actually were able to write the deal in such a way that the private corporation that was setting up the PPA was able to borrow whatever money they needed to at Morris County's bond rating. It was still their loan, but because of the way they were working it. So we've been in touch with the folks who built that particular model. It's quite novel law and maybe even was created in the state of New Jersey with lawyers that are still here and working in New Jersey. So again, our guess is that that's going to allow us to attract much stronger players in the field. One of the challenges for us is it's about upfront costs, taking on debt at this period of time and other kinds of things, and on the back end, the back end costs. So what we're hoping to do—the reason that we want to attract stronger players is at the end of 15 years, we want a group that's still in existence 15 years from now who will take the solar panels away.
Right.
I mean, typically, the PPAs, they give you the panels at the end of 15 years, right? Because the technology will have advanced so far, we'll probably be wearing—
And they lose efficiency throughout their lifespan.
And they lose efficiency throughout their lifetime, and they don't want to dispose of them. Well, the truth is, we don't want to dispose of them either, right? So what we're thinking in terms of one of the terms that we would like to write into our contract is actually to have whatever company we engage in take the panels away, be responsible for the entire lifespan of the panels. And the technology will be different. In 15 years, we'll be really happy to slap little solar panels on the roof, probably that you can paint on with a paintbrush or whatever the new technology is. So we want really strong companies that are going to be around and that are going to be able to come in and take those panels away and let us figure out what to do with our roofs in that next stage. And so while I understand what you're saying, I think that the way the law has been crafted here in New Jersey, there are a number of things that we can enter into. Big players are going to want to participate with us because we're going to be able to put together a big system and maybe take advantage of some of that, like the bonding issues.
One question I just have is Senator Bob Smith and Assemblyman Shapacola were working on a bill that modeled the Massachusetts bill by putting a floor on the SREC. Do we now have any idea where that has gotten past or not?
I got an email just the other day. It's moving along. It's been proposed. I don't know where it is. And so the—you know, and again, the question may be, let's—being very optimistic, we might be in a place in 12 to 18 months to move on this. If it should happen that the SREC market is stabilized at that point, and in fact, the differences between the PPA and being involved in the SREC market now become even, or you know, or the odds are a little bit better, we will have an opportunity at that point, all of us as separate entities, all of us as a joint cooperative agreement, to say, you know what? Maybe we want to look at—maybe want to look at this differently. Bergenfield School District, they moved on their solar panels a little bit ahead of us. They actually installed solar panels last spring and were just about to start to put their first SREC on the market. And their BA was learning how to do it, and we had a meeting in April or May, and in June, the SREC market tanked. They had taken out debt to do it because they were anticipating that the SREC were going to pay for it. So I think that what—the way that we're designing in the timeline here, we're going to have a lot of stop-and-go moments. And so it is a very fast-moving market. Our goal is to get the best professionals we can. The other reason to work together is that we can afford the most talented and most cutting-edge people, because we'll be sharing that cost, who will be able to help us make those stop-and-go decisions. If it should turn out that we should, in fact, be bonding at very low interest rates and jumping into the SREC market because it can't fall below a certain point, we can make that stop-and-go decision at that point. And at that point, too, we've done feasibility work, we already know how large a system we can put together, and all those kinds of things.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions?
Very exciting.
Yeah, just one other thing. I'd just like to thank the councilwoman for coming down and making a presentation, and Mr. Shannon as well. I'm going to be preparing a resolution for your next meeting, for your review, to join the cooperative. Even though we join, at this point, it's not going to bind us—
Not binding, right.
—to, you know, continue if it's not advantageous to us.
Great.
Thank you so much for the time. It's such a pleasure to come to somebody else's council meeting.
The next item on tonight's agenda is public hearing and adoption of ordinances. Could read ordinance 4258.
Ordinance 4258. An ordinance amending Chapter 36 to the title Traffic of the Township of Englewood.
The hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to comment on the ordinance? Going once, twice, seeing no hands. Hearing is now closed. Some would like to move the ordinance?
I'll move it, Mayor.
Ordinance—
Sir.
Move ordinance 4258 by Councilman Stern, seconded by Councilwoman Honus. Call call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Stern?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Gussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Honus?
Yes.
Councilmember Topler?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Next item on tonight's agenda is good and welfare. This is where anyone can speak on any item that's on the agenda or anything that they would like to speak about. Howard?
Excuse me. As councilmember, you ask councilmembers first. As I read it on the agenda, Mayor, to inquire whether—
Sure, Barbara. Uh, Councilwoman, go ahead.
—council has any comment. Thank you. I'm going to take a few minutes—I'm going to take a few minutes again to speak as I did on April 24th, because what has gone on in the past two weeks or went on—the week prior to this election—is a disgrace beyond all disgrace. It certainly is the culmination of two unbelievably horrendous years. And since we were talking just a short while ago about our young people, if this was a model for our young people, I am just terribly, terribly horrified. I am going to begin briefly to just speak to the grotesque event that I can only call the lawn sign event that many people hear about. One of the witnesses to it is here, one is not here, but she would be very willing to speak to it. But I need, first of all, to remind you of two of the emails. As you all know, I have been receiving emails from David Lera and his colleagues under a variety of different names. So I just want to remind you of two that I read previously. One is—this is from May 25th, 2010, 7:04. Your every movement comments will be monitored, a complaint will formally be filed against you. The next two years of your life will be the equivalent of that of a past council member until you either apologize—misspelled—for your racist remarks—no idea what those were—or resign. That was actually earlier that day, there came an email saying, you are the problem in TNEC, and we will haunt you until April 2012 or resignation, whichever comes first. On the day—on Sunday, May 6th, you all read about Barbara Topler steals—I don't know what I did—steals lawn signs or something. I'm going to make this quick because nobody really wants to hear the whole story. Simply told Clara Williams she could put a sign for Dr. Pruitt up next to my sign. She got to the corner and called me, and she said, where is your sign? It's not here. So I stupidly, stepping right into the trap that was set for me, walked down to the corner, and we looked around and finally discovered that my sign had been sandwiched between a Mark Schwartz sign and a Mohammed Hamidistan sign, such that one could not see it. I did go to the homeowner, who I had permission from, the DeAngelo's, to put my sign on their lawn, but what I hadn't realized was that I had put it on public property, and did confirm that I had permission to put my sign on their lawn that no one else did. Excuse me, I will wait until this finishes. Without going into a lengthy thing, I came back to Clara and said, I've just talked to—
So you're saying that the other councilmembers didn't have—or people running didn't have any—
No, I mean, no. I mean, what she just said was a flat-out distortion from what the police said.
I know, I have the police report here.
No, but I just wanted to clarify because— Are you saying that they didn't have permission?
No, I will tell you exactly. I spoke with Jeff DeAngelo. The DeAngelo's are friends of mine. I said, Jeff, do—does Chaim Kiss, the person across the street who came running out—see, it really is important that we get all the facts out, and I do have the police report. I said, does Chaim Kiss have permission—your permission to put these two signs on your property? He said, no, but your sign isn't on our property, you put your sign on public property. And I said to him, sure, go ahead, put it on public property. I came back to Clara, who was standing there with Dr. Pruitt's sign, and I said, this is really true, Mohammed, take that silly grin off your face.
You weren't there, were you?
Pardon me?
Who was there? Were you shaking his head?
No, it's—he was—well, he was not there, though later on, Mr. Katz, Adam Gussen, and David Lera were, since another one of my neighbors. And anyway, suffice to say, I came back, said to Clara—
Is that a fact, or are you just making stuff up again?
No, I mean, that's—
No, no, I'm sorry. You know what? I kept quiet at the last time, and then you sent out a big mailer saying that everybody on the day is silent, and that must mean it's true. But the fact was that if you looked—that was an outright lie, because if you looked at the tape, I was not silent after your 14-minute diatribe of how you saw things. I specifically spoke, but yet you neglected to mention that, and you said that everyone sat silent. So I'm sorry that I'm not sitting silent tonight because I don't want to be caught in another one of her lies.
I have never lied. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me, I am speaking, you may all speak afterward. You promised to get me off the council, and you did.
I never made those promises.
Congratulations.
I never made those promises.
Congratulations.
I think it's time you start pointing the thumb and not the finger.
I have the police report. I don't imagine everybody wants me to read the whole police report.
Sure, read the police report. Let's get some other facts.
Okay. On Sunday—here we go. And Mr. Katz wants it?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Katz—
Mayor, would you please exert your power—
Excuse me, there is no—there's no—look, I'm going to say one thing here. We can go out with class indignity, or we can turn this into some kind of event like we're doing again. I did not bring up anything—I—you know, I don't even know what to say anymore about this, but go on and finish what you have to say, and then we'll move on to good and welfare to the public.
No, read the police report.
No, it—Councilwoman Topler—
You have Sarah Rapaport here, and we can call Clara Williams in. Both were standing there. Sarah didn't choose to be—
You said that I was with David Lewer that day. I don't even remember seeing David Lewer.
I don't know if it was David Lewer.
So then let's not—let's stop the lies, Barbara. Stop saying something, and you then say, I don't know, I don't remember. All right?
I'm sorry.
What the mayor said is proper.
I was told by Tammy Urbach that she drove in—oh, who was that?
I don't know who that is either.
She lives in the yellow house.
Okay, and she never introduced herself. Now I'll try to make—say hello to her.
She said, I just walked in on Adam Kiss's house. Adam Gussen is there, Ellie Katz is there, and a tall, thin guy with gray hair and glasses is there. I'm sorry, I—
Maybe it was Yitz that was the tall, thin guy.
I don't think that was the tall, thin guy. I am going to—well, you know what? May I—let me—I'm going to just stop this for a minute. I am most touched to have received this email. I can't possibly say who it is from because I can't do that to him, but I'm going to read this—
We all know the emails are public.
Let her finish. Go ahead. Go ahead. Councilwoman Topler, please, continue.
Very well.
I mean, I just want to get through this, so please get through.
And want, may I feel uncomfortable in mentioning someone's name, but he is an Orthodox Jew in this community. Whatever our differences about style, approach, or policy, I found the tactics used to discredit you vis-à-vis the Orthodox Jewish community to be disgraceful, disgusting, a violation of Jewish law, prohibitions on slander, and I said so whenever I spoke to my neighbors about the elections. If people have legitimate disagreements with you and call you to task for things, well, that is fine, but to try and claim that you are anti-Orthodox or any of the other things they said to discredit you was not legitimate, though consistent with their approach to local and other issues. One can disagree respectfully and forcefully without resorting to slander. Furthermore, the idea that people would band together to try and oust you from the council is disturbing. Why a single dissenting voice was so threatening, I just cannot fathom. Please know that not everyone in the Orthodox community suffers from this group think. I wish you well in your future endeavors and hope to see you around town. I will ask this person if I may—
No, I think that was very well said.
I do, too.
Councilwoman Topler, are you finished with your statement?
No, actually, I'm going to leave that. I'm not going to try and argue with you silly people on this. Forget the frig— Forget this, forget the lawn sign. As I was explaining, as I was explaining to my son, who is a lawyer, I said, "I want you to, I want you to understand what the last two years have been like for me. If I had walked out of the Stop &amp; Shop carrying a grocery bag with a loaf of bread in it, I can guarantee you a headline would have appeared that said, 'Toffler Carrying Loaf of Bread. Why Did She Steal It?'" That's about what I've been living through. I don't know if that's, if you, that's easy for you to understand. This is a statement that I am making and I'm going to read it. And then I will be through with my statements. Okay. I am also, I am reading this because there are such wonderful people here and in the rest of Teaneck who have put themselves into such uncomfortable positions to support me, to love me, to stand behind me despite all of the awful things. Some few of them are here and I know you know them. They are the dearest people in the world and I know they're a little nervous about me, about what I'm going to be reading because they're afraid that you're all going to say it's, it's, what is it, sour grapes or poor loser. I don't think so, but I do think this is something I have waited, I didn't know when it was to say, but I have waited to say. This is my statement. More mainstream media attention has been given to my censure and ensuing events than any other story in the past two years. Well, you know what? Wait a minute, I have to read, I'm sorry, I do have to stop. I have to read you some David Lera emails because they're just too good to pass up. These are the emails I received the day before the election. I'm sorry that I didn't read this. From David Lera, I know none of you know who he is. Subject, "You have stooped to taking down opponent's lawn signs on Wendell Place just around the corner from your home, like," he, I will say the word "defecating," he used a word that begins with S and ends in T, "like defecating in your own backyard. First hit and run, suing the town, now trespassing. What will be next? What does Chuck say? Police report." 10 hours later by that night, I've gotten 10 of these things. Worse than hit and run, trespassing and removing opponent's lawn signs, you are now calling plainclothes off-duty police officers friends to help you with an off-duty, to help you with on-duty police officers. You are the most horrific...
Is that true?
No, you are the most horrific human being that this planet has ever seen. Thank you. You S.B. embarrassed, I don't know what that means, and you will be exposed for what you are, win or lose. And then I do, I forgot that I do have to culminate. I did write a piece explaining exactly what happened on Patch. And I have my whole two conversations with, with the police chief on here, but I'm not going to read them. As I said, I did write something on Patch just to explain what happened. And I got this message from Deputy Mayor Gussen, 5:08, 5:45 PM. Your lying speculation and spreading unfounded rumors must end. The divisive, unethical, and morally repugnant way you conduct yourself is appalling. How can you be so low and dirty? Yitz Stern never advised Kiss, this is, this is the best part of all, Yitz Stern never advised Kiss to call the police. To state he did is another one of your lies exposed. I know your ridiculous accusation is a lie because I advised Kiss, as I would any resident who thought the law was broken, to call the police.
Are you forgetting to read the email before you accused Mr. Stern of calling the police?
I know, I, I'm sorry. I, he called police.
No, what did you write on the Patch about?
Wait.
What I wrote?
Let's be honest.
We're not just talking about it. What I wrote on the Patch, Ellie?
Read the Patch part. Let's, let's not tell, let's not tell.
Ellie, Ellie.
Mayor, I'm not going to silence myself. I'm sorry, I did it, I did it in respect for her for 14 minutes at the last time and she sent out a mailer, lying to the whole town, how we sat there silent and that, and that means...
Ellie.
I'm sorry that you chose this council meeting, although I expected it for you to, I'm sorry that you decided to choose this council meeting to try to create a show and spectacle and a continuation.
Okay, Ellie, Councilman Toffler, I would, let her finish.
No, please read the statement before, where you accused publicly Mr. Stern of calling the poli...
We want to know who is the mayor here? Wait a minute. Can I, Sarah, Sarah, Sarah Rappaport?
Ms. Mayberger, please sit down. Ms. Maymergers, please sit down now. That's it. Please sit down.
And what did you write on the Patch?
Guys.
Please, everyone, allow me to read this statement.
Councilman Toffler, Councilman Toffler, I will allow you to read your statement, Councilman Toffler, but I ask you, both of you, to please take a deep breath right now. Okay? Just take a deep breath.
I will read this.
Take a deep breath, please.
I don't need to take a deep breath.
Okay, you were just yelling, just relax for a second. Okay, I understand, I understand.
No, all you just have to do is don't tell lies. Just try to read some more of the truth.
Guys, all right, enough, all right? Enough from the audience.
Excuse me?
Okay, enough from the audience.
I have never told a lie in this chamber.
Guys, Councilman Toffler, I'm going to just say, I'm going to finish. Councilman Katz, please do not interrupt her, no matter what she says, let her finish, and then you can, then, excuse me! And then you can finish and rebuttal what she says. Let's just get through this. We've been here for 15 minutes and we still haven't started good and welfare yet.
Thank you. More mainstream media attention has been given to my censure and ensuing events than any other story in the past two years. Culminating, as we know, in the lawn sign setup, Lauren Hodges' robo-call, assorted anonymous phone calls, and the vicious flyers distributed in many neighborhoods overseen by Councilmember Katz from his car, there are witnesses to what I state. Those events played a huge, perhaps determinative role in the May eighth election. I will speak tonight, sorry, I will speak tonight as I did on April 24th about the censure, however, to different effect. The document on which the censure apparently was based, a January 27th, 2011 confidential letter from Mr. Browden to the council, has never been released. I have agreed to release it. Mr. Turrets ruled that the manager too had to agree. The manager has said no without explanation, even though content from it was widely reported in the press and in the censure itself. Many residents have wanted to see the Browden document released, but were prevented from doing so in large part because of what Attorney Turrets last fall concluded, that the document is not subject to Oprah. Its contents, even its existence, was and is today to be kept as confidential. That confidentiality is mandated in the township's employee manual. Further, the material was to be reviewed only in closed session of the council, which is by definition confidential. Mr. Turrets' memo explains that charge against a council member of a willing and knowing violation of confidentiality would, if brought and proven, be a breach of a public employee's responsibility, a second-degree crime, a felony punishable if its effect is greater than $200 by dismissal from the office, in this case, the council. And that provision of the criminal statute has a six-year statute of limitations. Let's go back now to the lack apart of January 2011 and my censure on February 8th. A special closed session of council to discuss Mr. Browden's formal complaint, do remember that that was told to me in May of 2010, that a formal complaint would be brought against me. A special closed session of council to discuss Mr. Browden's formal complaint against me is scheduled for February 1st, 2011. However, a story about that confidential session and its content by Joseph Axe appeared in the Record on the morning of February 11th, 2011, before the confidential meeting had ever taken place. Copies of that story will be available on the table at the end of my statement. The Record story is remarkable in that it provides quite extensive detail from, even quotations from, what it reports to be the letter which is a formal complaint brought against me by the manager. It outlines the charges, some of which are explicitly confidential items under the employee manual. And in paragraph four of this very long and explicit story, Axe writes, "The council is expected to discuss the complaint in closed session tonight, whereas absolutely nothing about that session, except that it was happening, was legitimately and legally to be released." So the story comes out on Tuesday morning of February 1st, 2011, and it describes in detail a confidential document that was first to be discussed that night of February 1st. How did the Record get the story? Axe's story tells us, this, the letter, a copy of which has been obtained by the Record, describes in the morning what the council's going to be discussing at night. Somebody is guilty of the violation that Attorney Turrets has described. Axe left a clue at the end of the story, just a clue. He says, quote, "Toffler and Gussen have clashed numerous times in the past year and their differences are clearly both political and personal. Surely that is proof of nothing." Well, tonight, I will provide you with the information to explain the content of that article. It is a voicemail tape from the evening of January 11th, 2011, the day before the Axe story appeared, and it contemporaneously identifies specifically the leaker. Let me read a transcript of that voicemail.
You're going to play the voicemail also?
I have it if you want.
Yeah, that's what you promised us.
Okay, well, it will be played, but I'll just read it. First, the voicemail lady says, playing, I did not listen to this till the next day, playing old voice messages, voicemail message from 201, 487, 0133, sent yesterday at 5:44 PM. Hello, Barbara, this is Howard Proznitz. I'm calling at 4, make that 5:42 on Monday. There is, I believe, a council meeting tomorrow night. I thought it was an executive session. I'm not sure if it is or isn't. I'm calling because, actually, it was overheard at the Cresskill office, and I know who overheard it, so I'm not simply going to say, it's not me, but I do know. The Record reporter apparently speaking to Councilman Gussen on the telephone about certain, certain, well, about the subject matter, perhaps of, I presume the subject of the session. Anyway, can you give me a heads-up or some information about the session owner off the Record? I'd appreciate it. 207, 487, 0133, 201, 487, 0133. Tonight is deadline night, so I will be working to about midnight and can be reached anytime up until then. I won't be available tomorrow morning, but I will be available after 1:00 PM tomorrow, 201, 487, 0133, or my cell, 201, 321, 3349. Thank you. Goodbye. I did not return that phone call. In my opinion, in my opinion, before anybody starts jumping down my throat, in my opinion, based on the message, it is clear that Mr. Proznitz, as any reporter would, is trying to play catch-up. He had thought the next-day council meeting was confidential, off limits, and here he's being told that Councilman Gussen is describing content and purpose of a council meeting for the next day, and therefore he should try to get the information on what must be a special open meeting, since Gussen is apparently revealing meeting content. As a good reporter, he starts calling who would know, who he knows, to find out about the story, and we got his voicemail. Proznitz later tried to get the offender who leaked the story to Axe to admit who had done it. On 2/17/11, Proznitz reported that six of the seven council people, including Gussen, denied it was him. Another ethical problem at the councilman. But it is time for the charade to end. As I am stepping off the council, it is time for the charade to end. In my opinion, the person who has undermined the integrity of the Teaneck council, Teaneck's council for a year and a half, sits on this day as Deputy Mayor. Incidentally, copies of that voicemail tape are widely, have been widely heard and distributed in town. Copies can be made available.
That's the cop, that's the famous paper. No, no, I need clarif, I need, I'm not as, I need clarification. Okay, one second. That's the famous tape that you're talking about?
Stop it.
That's the famous tape that you're talking about that you were going to play, that this is the, this is what you're going to hear?
Let me state this again.
Ellie, let's hear the tape.
No, I want to hear the tape.
She's going to play it.
Okay, you're going to play it? Yes, please, go play.
No, actually, let's, her finish, please.
No, no, let's play the tape.
No, let her finish and then let's hear the tape. I'm sure he's going to play the tape. They got all this planned out, so come on.
I don't, nobody's, no, I, just me. Let me state this again to be sure that everyone understands the import. The voicemail comes in at 5:42 on January 31st, 2011, and describes a discussion Deputy Mayor Gussen is having with the Record reporter and Joe Axe writes, and the Record publishes next day, February 1st, a story with extensive, deep confidential information, quotes and all, before the council even has had a chance to discuss the letter. Do you understand why I think my rights have been violated? The manager's too. The manager's rights actually have been violated too, as you realize, since he does not want that revealed. So you, the manager's rights and my rights were both violated. Now, do remember what Attorney Turrets said. This release would constitute a second-degree crime, a felony, and even if no money were involved, still a third-degree crime, also a felony. That final, Mr. Gussen, you did, Mr. Turrets, you did not say that final comes from Attorney Eric Cassing. So even if no money, even if the individual was not paid for the information, it's still, it's still a crime and a felony. The time has come for Deputy Mayor Gussen to save this township the embarrassment of a long and costly trial. This information has been or will be, some of it has been, some will be taken, to all appropriate authorities. Let's save ourselves the embarrassment of a hack and sack spectacle. I call for Deputy Mayor Gussen's resignation and public apology to the residents of Teaneck tonight.
Are you finished?
I am finished.
Thank you. Howard Rose?
Quit getting, quit listening to the tape. Your husband's going to play.
Howard Rose, would you come, come up?
Good and well, Mr. Stur.
Yes, good and well, Mr. Stur. Name for the Record, please, when you're ready.
Thank you. Howard Rose, Teaneck. A couple of things. First, I want to congratulate Mohammed Hamiduddin, and I'd like to congratulate also Dr. Henry Pruitt and Mark Stern regarding their, Schwartz, I'm, Schwartz, regarding the recent election. I'd also like to acknowledge Monica Hoeness and Barbara Lee Toffler for having provided years of energy, dedication, and service. There are seven people sitting here this month. There'll be seven people sitting in June and again in July. So there's one thing that's consistent regarding this group, it's seven people. Faces change, but what remains the same is service towards our community, and I thank all of you for that. I hope that residents both on and off the council will be active. There are so many things that Teaneck needs to be done that can only be done literally by people coming together in a common cause. Another topic, Joan Davis. It'll be two years in August, and I'm bringing this topic up for another point, which I'll mention after reading a letter that I wrote to the editor. Joan was murdered on August 17th, and this letter was sent to the Suburbanite on August 21. I have a copy for that. Letter to the editor, Teaneck Suburbanite. We are always caught off-guard when the unimaginable happens. How do you reconcile the malicious murder of a gentlewoman whose main activity was to help ensure community well-being? Teaneck could not have asked for a more sincere advocate. I did not know Joan Davis on a social basis, but I did know her through our numerous encounters and discussions at many town council and town planning board meetings. Many evenings, after a late-night session, I would drive her home. She was always appreciative, and we were able to continue our exchange about various topics. Amazingly, Joan was always prepared with background information that she gathered without the use of a computer. There were some topics in which we did not agree, but she was always gracious and calm as she explained her position. Our community, our sense of security, and our general well-being has been diminished by the loss of Joan Davis. Howard Rose. Now, the reason I read this letter is as a reminder that there is a scholarship in the high school through the Teaneck Community Scholarship Fund. One of the funds in the many that are there is the Joan Davis Fund. Now, it was my understanding from an article in the Suburbanite that monies collected would be used towards that scholarship, and those monies provided prior to May 30th will be used to award this June classes scholars. I understand that that is really being geared for a longer period than that, so I'm not exactly sure, and maybe it'll be discussed further exactly how the money will be distributed in one. But at any rate, there are scholarships available for students through the Joan Davis Fund, and I urge people, council members, board members, residents, everyone, please contribute to this scholarship. It not only memorializes a person who had a lot of input to the council, a lot of concerns, a lot of statements to make, it also honors what in Teaneck I would consider one of our most important groups. important groups, our students, and not just our graduating students, but the top of the class, our scholars. This is a scholarship. There's merit for people to get this money, and I believe that it's that group that are most deserving, need your help, and I hope, in fact, you will do that. I'd volunteer to be recipient for checks, please make it checks, not cash, it's easier, for those who are inclined to provide money toward this. You know where my store is, at 450 Cedar Lane, the bookstore, I'm there every day but Monday after 12 noon. Again, I urge you to provide money, memorialize one person, honor with funding many others, and carry on her name. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. Gloria Wilson, TNEC New Jersey. I don't even know where to begin. I've had a lot of respect for everybody that sits on this council, and I've had a lot of respect for myself, so I'm gonna keep my respect. But tonight really told me a little something. I'm a little dismayed because of the mere fact that when we were going to school, we learnt that we listened to each other, whether you're right or wrong, whether or not you agreed, and I think that respect is lost here. And one of the reasons why I'm saying this, because we have a new group of people coming on the council, and I really hope that they don't get the disrespect that is going on here. Mayor Hamaduddin, which I believe you will be continued to hold that seat. I've always had respect for you. I don't wanna really lose the respect, but you need to make sure that the council is adding to the respect of other people. It's not fair, it's not right. When someone is out there talking, we get interrupted. We don't get the time period that we have to come before here. But when one of you on the council is speaking, I notice that time goes to one, but it doesn't go to the other. I'm not here to basically defend Barbara. She's gone through a lot. Her defense will come. If she's a strong believer, which I am, it's gonna come. But the truth hurts no one for people to listen. If it's not true, it's gonna come out. I don't understand why we cannot give each other the respect of that. I do not understand it. And as I said before, I'm not gonna lose my respect for myself, but listen, whether or not the person is right or wrong, listen. If it's wrong, then you come out with the truth and the facts. If it's not, then you suffer the consequences. But listen and give respect to each other. There are new people that are coming on this council. If you're treating one the way you're treating Ms. Topler, and the other people get on the council and don't go your way, what are you doing? We reside here. We're still gonna be watching. I'm gonna come here as much as I can. Nobody's running me out of TNEC. But the respect has to be given, and that's the only thing we ask for. The respect has to be given. I do wanna say to Monica, from the period of time that you were there, whatever you gave into the town, it was well-recognized, and things could have went differently. I do wanna say to Barbara that you fought a good battle, a honest battle. I was your campaign manager, we didn't do anything illegal. I would like to know what the ordinance is in the future for when signs go up and down, in case I have to work with anybody. I'd like to know where they should be put, where they properly should go. And Ellie, I am asking you, I used to have the highest and upper regard, respect for you, and I first moved here to TNEC, I was very proud of a young man that carried himself. I've lost it, and I've lost it because you're not respecting yourself when you continue to disrespect other people. Give him the chance to speak. There's nothing against right and wrong in speaking. This is a free country. We have a right to speak and say what is on our mind. We have a right, whether we dislike it or not. We have a right. And I said something to everybody, and I've learnt this, I've worked 39 years dealing with people's personality. If you don't like what somebody says, don't frown, don't squinch, don't lay back, don't act. Nobody up on this council is ignorant. You're supposed to all be grown adults with education. Utilize it. That's all I have to say.
The front.
My name's Amber Tucker, and up until about 10 minutes or 15 minutes or so, I was gonna come here and talk about the police force and my car accident that happened, but I can understand why the police force isn't doing anything, because look at who's on the council. I watched and observed, I observed Adam Gussen, I observed you, and I observed you, and you guys were completely disrespectful to Ms. Topler. Ms. Topler is a friend of my mother, and I came here to thinking that, you know, this was gonna be a good thing, I was gonna come here, I was gonna express how I felt about this police department, but look who, look who their example is. It's you guys. I watched you as the mayor, sit there, go like this as she's talking, lean back in your chair, I watched you interrupt her multiple times and be disrespectful. As a 19-year-old, what example are you setting? Where's example? Because it definitely wasn't in this room, and that's all I have to say.
Dr. Rashid, TNEC. Just for quite a while, probably a couple of years, I was enjoying the big dishes of manure, throwing back and forth, well, there, okay? So I thank the cooks, okay, but I probably got too much enough, and I thank Ellie that you did not explode and did not add to it, but please hold, and thank you, Mohammed, for trying to just keep it, keep it in order, but, okay, I do not want this to go, to go either above or in the, in the audience. And today, I'm going to say what I already mentioned during the election, and this was a kind of atmosphere of throwing suspicion, on basis of suspicion, throwing accusations and slander. And this unfortunately was done by organization which did some good, and this is not acceptable. So I'm talking about 2020, an attack on, on the clerk, that she violated the rules, she didn't do this, she didn't do that, well, and that's a kind of conspiracy and so on and so forth. First thing was about the events happening, leading to, to mess at Voty Park, okay? This is not the most likely, it's not any responsibility of a clerk, because I tried to get simple things regarding plastic cupola and documents didn't exist. We know that Jamie came to become, to become a clerk after the first previous clerk left, under bad conditions, intentionally leaving the mess of, of everything, okay? Then there was about half a year, slightly less, of William Browton being a clerk, and he is not specialist in it at all, so, no minutes and so on and so forth. And here comes a hard-working person, technology conscious and all this stuff, and within few months, actually, she, the, the whole, the whole archives are thrown into trailer, and it sorts out, so, I think it's finished to be sorting out by now, but it was not, and all this, well, just requests for operas, okay? Just, she could not get it, there were no documents, all these documents were not sorted yet, and so on and so forth. So basically, on the basis of suspicion, there is a, basically slander, okay, and, and just smearing reputation of honestly working, well, department and head of department. It shouldn't be done. Please, just, I suggested it already. First, check what are the laws. Then, look what is the situation person is working in. The situation is with complete disorder, okay, starting with. Okay, second, find what you can find there and get facts, and only after that publicly accuse somebody. Do it in this sequence, and I'll be absolutely fine. Here, you see, well, I can tell you that as far as Voty, yes, I think that manager should have been more careful evaluating every possible outcome of, of actions with, with testing, okay? He said, I didn't expect, he should ask, talk to more people. Most likely, no documents exist, okay? So on, on getting what it is. Result is a result. As for the 11 million, okay, here is, here is the May, record, May 5th recreation comes at a price. That was a, well, times of lavish, of liberal taxing and lavish spending on community centers. And this, the same thing was in TNEC. Well, I heard again from different sources that case was that, that the, the school, from, from the school, the school discussed community center from the very start, from '08, and at that time, Ellie was, was just around in, on the council, and Lizette was, so there were kind of things coming together. The, the government wanted community center, school wanted a community center. There's nothing strange that what happened in other towns, which are now just paying for that and being in debt, was going on in TNEC. Situation changed, but there is no crime there, okay? This was discussed, and strangely, for some reason, nobody said, yes, were discussions, okay, because, because the previous government wanted it, we considered what might come out of it. No problem, okay? It's not a crime. Okay, so, and please check everything around, because I spoke to people in the community school, I'll get more information, there's.
Thank you, Mr. Rashid. Mr. Rashid, thank you. Mr. Rashid, no, no, thank you, sir.
Sentence. Wait.
Thank you.
Sentence, one sentence. Okay, please.
Let's look to the council, please.
Keep it polite to, to everybody, don't attack personally people.
Thank you, Mr. Rashid. Ms. Tucker.
Barbara, thank you very much. I know your heart is in the right place. You love TNEC, and I appreciate all that you have done. I really do. Congratulations to Dr. Pruitt. Congratulations to Schwartz. And I think that's all I'll say for now. Ellie, shame on you. You know how I feel. I hope you change, and if you're gonna run a meeting, run it right. Hope you start acting congressional and stop this child's play, and that's all I'm gonna say insofar as that is concerned. I'm not gonna get up here and, and, and let y'all know what y'all already know, you're wrong, all of those robo-calls, all of them articles in the newspapers and the emails that I've gotten, all that negative stuff is not good for TNEC, and y'all are basically ridiculous, and shame on you. It's time we get some grown folk up there. Ellie, your time is up, I'm sorry, because you're really, really an embarrassment, okay? You're an embarrassment, and it's unfortunate, because my daughter came here tonight to speak about an incident that she had, and I wanna thank Esau for helping and trying to resolve it, but something is definitely wrong. She's 19, I bought her a car, there was an accident somewhere around Cedar Lane, two police cars, they were pulled to the side, she pulled and yielded, then they waved her on, as the cop waved her on, she went to drive, he goes over to his car, squad car, opens it up, and damages her car. He opened it up, asked, he waved her to go by, he went and opened up his car. Now, we waited three months to try to get this resolved, and I just, and I appreciate your efforts, this is no indictment on you, Mr. Browton, but something is wrong, because when that happened, we, we, we got a police report, and we, we followed all the things that we needed to do and made numerous phone calls, and it turns out there's no resolve. Now, that happened in March, and now, we just found out through my pushing, 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 Mr. Ty calls her and says, well, you just gotta wait for a, a case number. That's no way to handle things. And I understand that in the state of New Jersey, you can't sue, you can't, an insurance company can't go after a municipality for car accidents. That's, you know, that's the law, but there's gotta be a better way to deal with your insurance companies, because it was ridiculous how it was handled, and she got a phone call finally after many calls to the township to, Esau, I thank you once again, Mr. Ty, I don't appreciate how he handled it, well, you just gotta wait, that's ridiculous, it's three months later, she's still waiting. Finally, I took the initiative to just take the car, fix her side mirror, and she'll just have to live with the damage. She gets a call yesterday from the insurance company telling her, well, I spoke to somebody, and it was your fault. First of all, the sergeant tried to convince her at the scene, and the police officer admitted it, that it was his fault. Now, the situation has, and I understand accidents do happen, but the way in which it's handled and your insurance company is ridiculous. The woman calls her and tells her, we're not paying for it because it's your fault. I spoke to one of the police officers, after they admitted it at the scene. That's no way to treat any kid, let alone my own, or any resident, or any person. Gotta be a better way. So as it stands now, the car's not gonna be fixed by the township, I put out the money and, and, and fixed the mirror, and the scratches will just have to remain because we got over $2,000 estimate. And I just gotta express the fact that she, she wasn't able to do so because of your behavior, which distracted her from the reason why she came here. That gotta be a better way to deal with the bureaucratic stuff insofar as your insurance company is concerned. It's not right. Okay? It's not right. And I'm a little, I'm a little upset, because this night was what, was not what I expected it to be in terms of your constant interruptions and, and all of that. It's just messed up my entire, but I do hope that with new members on the council, Barbara, I hope you continue to work with the community and be an outspoken advocate, because we certainly need people, concerned people, who, who have the heart to stand up here and to tell them when they don't like what it is that's taking place. I welcome Mr. Schwartz, I'm hoping that, you know, the temperament will change. It's not about Barbara, I know, I've watched you, y'all did the same thing to Kevie, you didn't like, if he, if he wasn't going along with the old boys' club, you did things to him, you put out things, I know you did, and it's not right. This is no way to run a government. Shame on you. Okay, grow up.
Thank you.
Leslie McKean. I almost feel that anything I say is going to be anticlimactic after what has gone on here this evening, which, I mean, we keep on going down to the bottom of the barrel and scraping and scraping, and it seems to be endless. At any rate, as a supporter of Barbara Topler, I am naturally disappointed that she did not win this election. I think it's TNEC's loss, but far more disturbing was the ugly, abusive, defamatory, threatening, and dishonest campaign against her by her political opponents and their supporters. They flooded the community with emails and phone calls using language that cannot be repeated here. They made a mockery of TNEC's "Fair Campaign Practices" pledge, in which candidates commit to, and I quote, "not engage in defamatory attacks upon their opponents, to publicly repudiate any such attacks, and to assume personal control and responsibility for the conduct of their campaign," end of quote, "and to forbid the use of campaign materials that do not live up to these values." Every pledge has been broken, as well as all the so-called values of all religions. In Judaism, there is the concept of lashan hara, or evil tongue, and it is a sin, even if the derogatory speech is true. Far worse is slander or defamation. Even gossip is forbidden. They are all sins. My daughter, along with many other TNEC High School graduates, wrote a college sociology paper about the 1960s integration of TNEC's public schools. They were proud to be from TNEC. We have all been proud of our town, but this campaign has brought TNEC to a new low, and I think this evening's meeting has gone even further. It is an embarrassment. I am also dismayed that most people in TNEC did not bother to vote. In one district, only 11% of the registered voters turned out, and in most other districts, the numbers were little better, in the high teens or 20-something. I don't know if any of you remember the Delaney sisters, but as one of them once said, "Honey, if you don't vote, you don't have the right to complain," and I don't ever want to give up my right to complain. So I'm here to complain about this election, about this evening's deplorable council meeting, and as a resident, I am ashamed and disgusted, and I will continue to complain. Finally, I would like to make an announcement. Monday night, May 21st, TNEC 2020 will be sponsoring a forum at the media center at TNEC High School at 7:30. Teneck High School at 7:30. And it is, right, at Teneck High School. And it is about protecting public education. And you are all welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Hot Batsky, Teneck. I must be leading a charmed life. I didn't get the mailings that people are referring to. I'm frightened by them. They remind me of 2006 election where I did get the mailings and I was disgusted by them. And nothing, well, I should say nothing, little was done. I think the county district attorney was involved. And once again, the MO, the way of operation, is that things happened the last weekend of the election. And I think that happened again this weekend. I didn't see any, I didn't get any, I didn't get any calls, I didn't get any other things. So I'm relieved that I missed it. But if that's what happened in Teneck and it impacted thousands of people, then I believe this election should be invalidated. You have no right to take a seat here if you were elected by illegal means. And that should be determined. If these, if these documents, if these emails, whether, and I'm, you know, Dr. Pruitt's right here, you know, I'm not gonna point any finger at him, but he's caught in the middle. If these documents or emails went to a few dozen people, could make a difference, well, maybe we'll just let this go. But if it went to hundreds of thousands of people, you gotta run another election. Okay? We don't, we don't? Okay? I wanted to, that's, that's, that's how I feel. That's how I feel. Illegal is illegal. You know, it's not a pass. 2006 it wasn't. I think 2008 or 2010, some funny things happened. 2012 happened again. We've got a disease here in Teneck. We've gotta clean it out. We've gotta take a couple of shots. Okay? Next thing, I wanted to commend the council on something that we all overlooked for years, which was the condition of these chairs that we sit, sat on that were all cracked. You may remember my upset at, at knowing that we had eventually, we had put in the hands of possible felons or upset people, a means of doing harm to others. And I, I regret my exuberance and my outburst, he remembers, but it's resulted in new chairs. There's now no sticking out, rods sticking out that people can pull off and use to hurt one another. I also remember Joan Davis. I gave Joan Davis a lift home at least once, of course, that's how I know where she lived. She doesn't live far from here. She died not too far from here. I gave her a lift home on a really frigid night. Really frigid. Cut through your clothes, wind. Okay? And I know there were people waiting for buses all over Teneck, including what's now the Chestnut Plaza. Now, about a month ago, I found out that there's 13 more bus shelters being put in place, but none are at Chestnut Plaza for some reason, which I feel is the busiest location in the streetscape. Now, Mr. Brownton and I have had discussions and I've exchanged emails and I've sent photographs. And he's considering whether to place a bus shelter there. I certainly hope he is. Okay? I am not, I, I like the process. I respect his respect for my request. But I want to see, I think benefit, Teneck will benefit if it has that shelter there. I think of Chicken of the Seas going out of business last week. Okay? That's like two doors from that, where that bus shelter is. What did I say? Chicken of the Seas? Oh, sorry. Sorry. So, anything to help that central business community would be nice. I don't have a business there, but it's, it's a valid thing. I think it should be done. I hope that's, did the conclusion you come to, Mr. Brownton. And you should know too, that I have started a petition. And some pages are a little wet because I did it in the rain at the bus stop. But I haven't spent an hour doing that. And I've got quite a few signatures.
Thank you. If you can give those signatures to, if you can give those signatures to the clerk at the appropriate time.
There are a couple of, how many more meetings will there be of this council?
Just your name for the record, please.
What was that? Naomi Kramer, sorry. This is not the last council meeting, is it? So there'll be two more?
Three more.
Three more. All right. First of all, I am a little confused. This is the first I'm really hearing. I don't remember the sequence of what happened with that newspaper article. I don't think anybody of us were aware that the day bef, the, the day of a meeting that was going to be dealing with a document that was not to be released, an article appeared in the record quoting from that document. I mean, that happened. That is fact. Okay? I did not realize that. I'm sorry Barbara didn't make that public at that time. Maybe we could have dealt with it then. So somebody talked to the record reporter. Somebody did. It couldn't have been Barbara. I doubt whether it was Mr. Brownton. I don't know. But if, if a voicemail comes in and is requesting very innocently, I think he was innocent, he really, it was an innocent voicemail asking Barbara about this, considering he overheard that Mr. Gussin was talking to the reporter the day before and that the, the article then appeared. That is fact. The fact is that this is what he heard and overheard. And he, in innocence, was calling to find out about it. So this is very upsetting. That's all I can say. And considering that we were not allowed to even see that document, it is very upsetting that a reporter had access to it. That a reporter had access to it and reported on it anyway. There was a quote in the paper about the election, "Council Winners Pledge Teamwork." And I want to read the quote from Mr. Hamadou. "It is very important to understand that we work as a team. I am hopeful that with this new council, you'll see a much more," I guess there was a word left out, "more collaborative effort than it was before." And this scares me. This scares me because, what does collaborative mean? What does teamwork mean? I hope that it does not mean that if you, that everyone is expected to act in lockstep, lockstep and agree. I hope it does not mean that. Teamwork, collaborative effort. I hope it doesn't mean that vigorous debate will be suppressed on issues where there is Collaborative team effort? Is there disagreement allowed? In a democracy is about open dealing with issues and allowing for debate, new ideas can come from it and be presented. And I hope that you allow the new members to disagree, express differing opinions without being shunned or slandered or ostracized. That's my hope. Now, another quote, I want to, well, how much time do I have? Okay, I can deal with that next time. The Joan Davis Scholarship Fund. I had been told that we need a certain amount of money for a scholarship for this year and that we could add to it and just give all the money this year, but that Ms. Warnke, who's in charge of the scholarship fund, said that what we could do is bank the money and anything over the amount, and then we would not have to be doing this every year. That there will be a fund then available every year to give to Joan Davis. So that I hope people will continue to contribute, make the checks out to the community Scholarship Fund of Teneck, and put a designation on the left side to Joan Davis. Don't forget that because then they won't know who it's for. And it could be sent, given to Howard Rose, who's offered to collect them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Powers?
Ms. Powers, Teneck. Everything that Dr. Toffler said tonight, I believe to be true. And I have very good reason to believe to be true because I've seen almost everything that she talked about tonight. The problem in a democracy is knowing what must be confidential in order to protect individual rights and what must be transparent. But the public has a right to know in a way which they can form informed judgments. And what it is, they don't have a right to know because to know would violate the, the rights of people until certain procedures occur. And I believe this township, almost universally, gets those two fundamental factors about what constitutes a democracy completely wrong. We have almost no access to Oprah at this point. I'm waiting for seven and a half months for some Oprah requests to come in. And I know those documents exist. I know that we don't have a capacity to track what this council has done with its resolutions because we don't have many, many sets of minutes. That's part of what transparency requires, and we don't have it. And I'm beginning to believe we don't have it because the people who run this town don't want us to know. And yet we have, on the other hand, the release of information promised to be confidential, the release of which is actually a felony. And we believe we have some pretty interesting indicators as to precisely who it was that did that. We are in trouble in this town. The lawlessness must stop. And those of us who no longer have Dr. Toffler to raise those questions from the dais are gonna have to be much more vigorous from where I'm standing tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mark Schwartz, not Stern, Teneck, New Jersey. I'm surprised Mr. Batsky didn't thank us for the conservation of energy in the room, but I'm, I'm dying here. We gotta do something with the air conditioning. I wanted to thank Ms. Honus and Ms. Toffler for their many years of service at Teneck. I'm sure we'll continue to see them around and I look forward to that. I wanted to stand up here on behalf of myself, my campaign manager, Angela Wilkerson, my treasurer, Kiwi Fight, and to say mission accomplished. Not that we won, because winner-loss, we were happy with whatever happened as long as we ran our campaign with honesty, ethics, and dignity. I signed a campaign pledge and I came up to this council when I signed it and said I will abide by it, and I'm happy to say we did so. Our campaign documents will be filed. Anything, any money that we took, any money that we spent will be accounted for. We, we took part of no campaign, no negative campaigning. I did not endorse anything that did not have my name on it, that said endorsed by my campaign, discussed by my, with myself and my team. If you have any concerns, if someone felt, someone did something wrong, by all means print that to my attention. But I attest to you that I signed that campaign and I live by that pledge. I look forward to serving the people of Teneck the next four years and hopefully beyond. And any concerns, any questions to anyone on this dais, anyone in the room, by all means, please reach out to me. Thank you.
It's Ron Costello, longtime resident of Teneck. I stand here with my head bowed, believe me or not. I listened to that charade today. I'm tired of hearing this here. I'm getting calls from colleagues from New York City who are supposed to be more civilized than the small-time hicks they call us now. You guys have been an embarrassment for the last year, all of you. I'm not even singing anybody out. I'm really appalled at the relentless attack on Dr. Toffler. I've never seen politics where people go out there and systematically tear somebody apart. For what reason? What's the gain? I congratulate you for losing, believe, believe, believe it or not. Get out of this cesspool. I could never have taken this as a grown man. And you, Ms. Honus, the same thing. I congratulate you for losing, believe it or not. You could not even have sleep, sleep, nights you can sleep in and feel comfortable again. I am so appalled at the behavior of most of you senior members here. And I really favor term limits. Some people there just too long. Mr. Swartz, I congratulate you. Dr. Pruitt, my classmate, I congratulate you. And you also, Mahanat. I think you're growing, but you're growing too slow. You need to grow a little faster than that. Believe me, if I was 20 years younger, I'd take on any one of you. And I think I'd win without even any spending a dime, a dime, because I'm an honest person. The manager, he's my friend, colleague, but I think he's being misguided sometimes. I hate to take the brunt from his mistakes, or whatever he may make. When I read things that are factual, there's rules, there's lies, opinion, rumors, and facts. When I read facts, I can't dispute that. I'm in a hospital visiting a friend, reading an email saying vote for two people, Swartz and Mahanat. What kind of government is that? That you would say something like that to anyone who's a voter? We're not supposed to tell people who to vote for. I would never do nothing like that for anybody. I gave out signs for everybody who offered me, so I gave out signs for Monica, I gave out signs for Puritans, anybody who asked me, I would help. But I believe, man, in justice and due diligence. Sincerely. And I hope that new council get together with you, that experience of age and wisdom makes us a better place to be governed.
David Spielman. How about changing topic? I've been trying to stagger my, my issues so that they wouldn't take up too much of the, of your valuable time, especially since so much of it already has been. But unfortunately, I will be going out of town for the summer, so I'll try to be, quick housekeeping. One is, it was raised about solar panels. I don't know if we're big enough to qualify here, but I know that down in Atlanta, that they're in a program called Clean Cities, which I believe, don't hold me to it, but I believe provides grants and funding to help municipalities get greener technologies, thus helping their bottom line because they're spending less on fuel, on energy. I know that their massive airport down there got a whole fleet of vehicles powered by natural gas so that they, which costs a lot less than gasoline and diesel does. I did some quick research on the computer and I think they even have like things that you add-ons, packages to put in police cruisers so that they don't idle for as long, all of these, of which could save us a lot of money. I also wanted to raise the issue of the sheer number of uncontrolled intersections in our community. Most of them are T intersections. There's no stop sign whatsoever. Under state law, they're supposed to be treated like a four-way stop or a three-way stop as the case may be, which nobody ever does. It's a miracle there hasn't been a major accident yet. I believe the assumption is that the person whose road is ending, that motorist would slow down before turning, but they're not gonna stop. I'm trying to think of one other thing that's on the tip of my I'm trying to think of one other thing that's on the tip of my tongue, and I can't remember it, so I'm not going to waste any more of your time. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Councilman-elect, Dr. Pruitt.
Looking forward to working with the council. And I'm hoping that over the next two years, we will find a way to repudiate the negative campaigning that's going on that nobody's responsible for. Somebody benefited from that the last time they were elected, and somebody benefited from it this time. As a township, we deserve better. And elections can be won and lost without that. It wasn't necessary to attack Robert Toffler like she was attacked to win the election, in my judgment. I believe that there's a lot of good left in Teaneck, and I'm going to serve the town as best I can. I'm looking for common ground up on that level, and I think that everybody else is looking for the same thing. We have seen a couple of moments lately that we can't be proud of. We have to look for higher ground, and I'm hoping that this new council with Mr. Schwartz and myself, and congratulations, Mohammed, will be able to have a better turnout in terms of how we operate for the year 2014.
Anyone else? Seeing no other hands, Kynwell, for it's not closed. Mr. Manager, if you could just explain the process of how the address, the issue with Ms. Tucker's daughter is addressed, if a police officer gets into an accident, what's the investigation? How does it work if she says one thing and he says another?
Well, normally, the process would be, an accidentary report would be filed. After the accidentary report is filed and the investigation is conducted, the person who was in the accident would report the accident to the insurance company. There's really two avenues that you can go. You report it to your insurance company, and your insurance company handles it with our insurance company, or you can try to report it to our insurance company. There was some issues, you know, involved in the process, and we worked as best we could to smooth those issues out and to get it properly reported to our insurance company. So, I mean, it's a basic process in any accident. You get in an accident, the police department does a basic investigation. In their investigation, it's a simple form that...
So, somebody else, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is somebody else coming to take that report, or was it the officers at the scene, if you're familiar with it?
Yeah, it's not the officer that was in the accident. They would call another officer to the scene to take their report, and the officer takes a statement from each of the parties to include in that report.
Okay, so it seems like we have a difference of this set of events. Now, what happens then?
I think that, as my reading of the report is that if there's certain boxes in the sides of the report that say who's at fault, I thought it was the officer that was at fault. I mean, it says it, I think it said something about inattention. I thought that that was clear in the report.
Okay, so her insurance company could be mistaken when they say that we say that we're at fault, that's...
Yeah, I mean, it's up to, the insurance company has to handle it. We have insurance for this. We have insurance company. They have to deal with this process. We don't really tell them how to deal with the process and tell them what claims to deal with. They have their own processes for handling the various claims.
Got you, okay. Thank you. If you can just follow up with her on that. I'm just going to finish my statement, and then I'll give it up to everybody else. I'd like to also thank Dr. Henry Pruitt and Councilwoman-elect Schwartz. I'd like to congratulate them on their victory. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Toffler and Councilwoman Honus for serving on the council for the last four, two years and eight years, respectively. Four years and eight years, respective, okay. You know, politics isn't easy, as you can see, and we try to do the best we can. It's divisive by nature, as I've always said, and during election times, we always have these issues that come up, where someone says someone did something wrong. I'm very proud of the campaign that I ran. I'm very proud of the campaign that everybody ran. Now, there are other people outside of this town who go out and do things that I'm not very proud of, and at that point, I choose to ignore things. I was not left unscathed by attacks. I was not, not given a pass. People said things about me, people wrote things about me, and I chose to ignore emails, just as I chose to ignore emails tonight that I received from people who sent me quote-unquote "love letters" after I got elected. What I will say, though, is when we talk about the future and we talk about a more collaborative and teamwork approach, a more collaborative and teamwork approach is, let's say, when we disagreed on the cap bank. I agreed with Councilwoman Toffler when we voted to not have the cap bank. Councilwoman Honus agreed not to have the town cap bank. Deputy Mayor Gussin agreed not to have the cap bank. Councilwoman Stern and Councilwoman Parker wanted the cap bank, and we had a debate here. And we didn't politicize the debate and call each other things. Another issue was when the budget was adopted. I was willing to support a 1.9% budget. I thought it was a responsible budget. Councilwoman Parker was willing to support that. Councilwoman Honus was willing to support that. Councilwoman Toffler wanted more information and wanted to look at a 0% budget. I did not vilify her. We didn't politicize it. We went through the process. She abstained, and we passed the budget. That's a collaborative team approach. I'm not laying blame on anybody for saying what they want to say. I'm not laying blame on anybody for fighting for what they want to feel. I just think that, you know, as we go forward, we have two choices. We can be bitter, or we can be better. And we owe it to the residents to be better. In the last two years, I have never organized a council meeting where I told people to come out and support me during Good and Welfare and had a canned meeting. I gave everybody the opportunity to come in and say what you have to say, and not bring people in and call them up and say, "Come and support me, I'm being attacked." I want to hear your opinions. Sometimes I agree with you, sometimes I disagree with you. But I think that over the next four years and the next two years where we're going forward, I'm happy that I think that we have a collaborative council of people who I think are going to work well together and respect one another. Councilwoman Toffler?
Yes. Let me be careful by supporting the Joan Davis Scholarship. I hope everybody will contribute to that, and I hope very much, believe me or not, what... Okay. Okay, can you hear me? I support the Joan Davis Scholarship, and I hope everyone will contribute, and I hope that the person who murdered her will indeed be found. It's getting father, and it's very, very sad. Second, I'm sorry, Councilmember Katz is not here. I do want to read, I didn't get to read before. Let me just read you the ordinance about putting signs in the public way. There actually is an ordinance. This is, can be found in Township Code, Chapter 2. This is Section 3-1, Signs, Show Bills, and Billboards Prohibited. Then it says, R. 1951, Chapter 3, and 1. No person shall erect or place any sign, show bill, show board, or billboard in any public street or place except such as shall be authorized by the Township Council. That is the ordinance. No person shall erect or place any sign, show bill, show board, or billboard in any public place, street, except as shall be authorized by the Township Council. I did have two conversations with Chief Robert Wilson about this, in which he did say, "Councilwoman, you did nothing wrong. In fact, what you did was right." That's a direct quote. But there was also something else he said, which is, has led to some of this confusion. There are signs all over this town that do violate the code during election time, but during the political season, we don't enforce the ordinance, because then we get accused of favoritism, because we took down one person's sign and we didn't take down another. So, we just let the signs stay where they are. But there is an ordinance, a law, and it is just not enforced to hopefully prevent problems. And so, there you have fact, plain old fact, and everybody can get it. There's the sign ordinance, and here's my discussion with Chief Wilson, so you can, you missed it, but there it is. I do want to say that I was really pleased to hear Mrs. Wilson, my truly extraordinary, extraordinary campaign manager, say, talk about respect, because she and so many of the people that I know and love, she, my cousin Leslie McKean, Mrs. Gwen Aigri, James Kinlock, my dear, dear friend, Ron Costello, Ray Moore, who I hope is healing, Tom Abbott, Jane Irwin, so many, so many people, what they all show is such respect for themselves, for each other, and for everybody. And I, but I did also like, because I am feisty, there is no doubt, and I like a little feistiness. And Mrs. Wilson said, "No one is running me out of Teaneck." But let me tell you one of the sad things about, that happened on Sunday around the sign thing. Don't anyone yell. Mr. Chaim Kiss yelled at me in the presence of witnesses. "Everybody in Teaneck hates you. You don't belong in this town." My neighbor lives next door to me, our neighborhood is a small and close neighborhood, comes, she's a young woman who comes from Eastern Europe, and she came over Wednesday with a piece of cake for me, and she had a question. She said, "Are they going to make us leave Teaneck?" Just thought I'd mention that. One or two other things. I was so proud of Amber. She really has grown up. I've known her since she was a bit younger, and it was really absolutely delightful to see her. I do want to let everybody know, I am going to continue to work with the community, and you're probably going to see me here at every council meeting. And though I'll only have five minutes, not 15, I guarantee you, questions about the law, questions about bidding, or anything else, I'm going to be here, and I'm going to be doing the same thing I've been doing for four years, because that's who I am. I just want to make sure, Mr. Vaske asked about, you know, how many of these letters went out. I don't know. We all do know that a gentleman, Mr. Frome, who used to live in Teaneck, is somehow on this mailing list. He now lives on the West Coast, and he has been asked, asking Ms. Delara, who does live in Teaneck, these are not people from outside, Ms. Delara lives on Maitland, he's been asking him to please take him off the list, take him off the list. And I believe somehow or other, Councilmember Stern's letter to certain people about voting for two people got attached to the end of this long chain of emails. But I will simply say that finally, the response from David Delara to Mr. Frome, who I gather lived in this town, was F-k-u. And so, this is, this really has been a horrendous campaign, and I would say, Mark Schwartz, I consider a good friend of mine. Dr. Pruitt, I consider a good friend of mine. But Mark and Angela, I consider a friend of mine. Part of that pledge that we all signed says, "If you see something," it's like the honor pledges in colleges, it's like the honor pledge at West Point and Annapolis and the Air Force Academy in Denver. It's not just I won't do in my campaign, it's if I see something, if I know of something, I will get up. And I cannot believe that nobody knew of what was going on. It just, I don't believe it. So, I think that there should have been people standing up, not for me, but for Teaneck and for an honest and decent campaign. And by the way, I do have all the information in terms of who overheard and everything about that voicemail. And I do call for Councilmember, for, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Adam Gussin's resignation, and I will do that publicly, and I will do it to the press.
Councilwoman Katz.
Two years ago, I ran for council, and the only negative literature put out during that election was signed by Mr. Powers. I believe you're related to him. In fact...
Sorry, what about the...
In fact...
I couldn't interrupt you.
No, I'm sorry. We all agreed that we didn't...
Guys, wait.
I'm sorry. We just said, I didn't interrupt you. I know, you can lie, and now you want to say, "Let's see who else is lying." Okay. But you were wrong. It wasn't two years ago, but that was a good try. All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, another lie. All right. And during that campaign, some of your supporters stood outside my meet-and-greet at the Golden Grill, handing these out to my supporters. I didn't see you stand up and say, "This is against the pledge," or repudiate. I know, of course not, because we have two sets of rules. You know, I'm not going to sit here attacking you, because I don't think that that's right to do. But you sit here making statements and attacking your colleagues, pretending like it's true, because you say it so eloquently and so articulately, but it's almost like 100% lies, and like, you get upset when someone says you're a liar. But you're a liar. You know, you're saying here, Councilmember Katz from his car, so now you're going to put out a statement once again that I'm lying, and that the witnesses, that I was dispersing some vicious flyers, right? Now, unless Mr. Hamadoudin's door hanger with his kids on it was a vicious flyer, which you may consider it may, it's once again an outright lie. But now you're going to put this out into your statement, and then you're going to get upset when my supporters or myself come back at you, because once again, you lied to the public. You sit here about Deputy Mayor Gussin. I still don't get it. I'm sorry, maybe I'm a little slow, but you're saying that Joe Axe spoke to somebody in the suburbanite office, somebody in the suburbanite office spoke to somebody else, Howard Proznitz overheard the somebody else, and then called you, and you have a tape that says that... I don't even know who the tape is, because you promised, you said it at a meeting, and you can pull the tape. She said, "I will play you at the next council meeting," this tape, and to this day, a few months later, it still has not been played. Another lie, but that's okay. You said that, yet Stern, you got upset that... I'm sorry, did I say something that was inaccurate here?
Completely.
I know. You just don't appreciate it.
I'm sorry, don't even listen to my husband speak.
I can continue if you want, but it really is not for the supporters in your room, because, you know, I actually, I'm actually very jealous and envious of the supporters, because no matter what, you stand by her. And you know what? I appreciate that. I really, I respect that, and it's very envious to have supporters do that. But you know what? Supporters should also say, "Barbara, check the facts before you attack your colleagues, because maybe if you don't want your colleagues to attack back or to respond, maybe we should be a little accurate." So, I'm going to speak to the residents of this town, because you lied again in your mailing when you said that nobody on the dais said anything after the last rampage of your censure. And you sent that thing saying, "Everyone kept quiet," but if you look at the videotape, I did not keep quiet, and in fact, I responded afterwards, but that was another lie out of your thing. Here's my comment to you, your supporters, and to the whole, and to every resident of Teaneck. You can continue to point fingers. You can continue to attack. You can continue to say things that you think are not vicious to other people, but are hurtful when you sit here and try to attack some of my colleagues. Or you could spend the next X amount of time you have on the council, and hopefully many more days that you have in the audience, to work together to help Teaneck, because this is not making Teaneck better. This is, this is making Teaneck worse. And yes, you do cause me to respond, and maybe that is a negative, and maybe I shouldn't, and maybe some of the people that were supporters of mine are upset at me for responding. But I want anyone in the room to answer me how they would feel if their name was replaced with Councilmember Katz. Maybe because I'm a public official, I'm allowed to be attacked, and I get that. I got thick skin, I'm okay with that. But if your name was associated with Councilmember Katz from his car, and there are witnesses, the same witnesses that told me that they thought it was Delara that was standing with me, oh, maybe it was a different, was dispersing vicious flyers, how would you respond if your name was after that? Maybe you should talk to your friend and say, "Barbara, stop the vicious attacks, work with your colleagues, and let's try to make Teaneck better." We don't have to agree, and trust me, Barbara, and I think you can acknowledge this to everybody, that you and I have tried to work together. In fact, we've come together on many issues in your tenure here. In fact, when you... In fact, when you last left, before you left, I tried calling for you, because you and I were going to bring up court security, we spoke about beforehand. So it could end tonight where the supporters stop attacking, or we can continue tonight, and then please, don't be surprised when other supporters get up, or even when council members get up and respond, because nobody likes to be attacked. And by the way, Ms. Tucker, I happen to agree with your daughter, she, she said it very well. Thank you.
Councilmember Mars. Deputy Mayor Guston. Councilmember Stern. Okay, thank you. Next item on tonight's agenda is introduction of ordinances, there are none, old business, the property assessment with the tax assessment.
I'd like to move the consent agenda, resolutions B through I, and the bill list and the amount of?
Eight million, 201,1043 dollars and 19 cents.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker?
There's preemptive, yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Stern?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Guston?
Yes, with an abstention on bill list, item 166733.
Councilmember Hona?
Yes.
Councilmember Katz?
Abstention on the bill list and on resolutions E and H.
Councilmember Hala?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, now, the next item on tonight's agenda is introduction of ordinances, there are none, old business.
May I ask a quick question? The clerk, Madam Clerk, you'll, the, the, the employment initiative resolution that we passed tonight, you'll pass that along to whatever we, the entities we mentioned at the end of the resolution, I think some local legislators and stuff like that.
Old business, the property tax assessor wasn't not available for the report.
We'll have to reschedule that.
Okay, there's no miscellaneous, new business.
I actually have a, I don't know where it would fall, under miscellaneous or new business, or wherever, but I just want to make a request that all outstanding minutes be caught up before the new council is seated.
Yeah, can we make sure that all?
Absolutely.
All of them.
Jamie?
Before the new council is seated.
Okay.
And if we can make sure that councilmembers elect get those minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Under new business, I know Deputy Mayor Guston has a resolution that he wants.
I actually have two items. One, I'd like to, to see if we can make two additional nominations to the Votey Park Advisory Board.
Okay.
Is that appropriate for us to do, so we can, we can put it our, our next meeting to, to make the appointments official? And I'd like to nominate Mr. Dunn Levy and Ms. Flaherstein.
I think that one of the things I would like to see, Mr. Dunn Levy, I'm in agreement with, the last meeting, I think that there was a Mr., a Dr. Jimenez.
Yes.
I would like to, I would support Mr. Dunn Levy, and I would like to, I would, I would be more in favor, because we put Sue on the, Sue Forstmann on the, on the Parks and Recreation, I would like to see another scientist on the, on the advisory board. Would you be willing to change?
Sure.
How many more positions are there?
That makes nine.
That's nine in his alternates?
Yeah. So Mr. Dunn Levy is someone who is not from the science world.
Right.
He's a physical therapist, but he's someone who's actively involved.
Are we allowed to talk about people now, or is it a closed session? How do we?
Can we talk about people in the?
We can, we can talk about people's qualifications, very specifically.
Meaning, I mean, is someone else that I'd like to see, so, I mean, should we discuss it now?
Is there a different set of qualifications than?
Different qualifications, because his name is not on the list.
Two things. Number one, you've appointed the seven members by resolution this evening, and it's my understanding they will be holding their first meeting on the 17th, am I correct?
Correct.
So whoever you say you're going to appoint, where they will be officially appointed, I would suggest you let them know about the meeting, so they can at least attend the meeting.
Absolutely.
Et cetera. In terms of, if Councilman Katz has a name that he would, wants to put forth, now's the time to put it forth, and say why, why you support it or not support it. But I strongly would recommend you make your two appointments this evening, because this committee is going to be meeting.
I want to put forth Avi Fresh.
So you have three names that you're considering.
Do you have a second?
Mayor?
Yeah.
There was the one applicant, I won't mention any names, because we're not in closed session, but there was one applicant that was notified about the.
Yeah, we're not going to, the interviews, I think, we have to move forward.
What qualifications, you know, as opposed to the two, or three, actually?
He's an attorney. I don't have his exact resume in front of me, but it was very impressive. How many attorneys do we have on currently?
There's, there's one. And I, and I think with that appointment, I think we all felt that that was specifically, that, that applicant had, not just, not that they were an attorney, but they were practicing environmental law, and so brought a specific set of credentials.
So who the two that you're, that?
Jim Dunn Levy, who's longtime involvement in Teaneck Junior Soccer. I think we have a tremendous collection of scientists and, and other folks being able to assess and analyze that data, to crunch those numbers, but the thing that I wanted to see was that the users of the field were, were, you know, had, had, had an opportunity to, to at least weigh in in the process, and, and Ms. Flaherstein is, I think, about a decade long ahead of TBO, and so those being the two main stakeholders as far as youth sport groups regarding Votey Park, I, I think, that's, that's the, the credentials that I felt were, were valuable at this point for, for their inclusion.
So you're not putting up Mr. Jimenez? You don't want to, you want to stay?
I think Mr. Jimenez is a fine gentleman with wonderful credentials, but I'm.
You want to stay with, okay, so you want to stay with non-scientists?
Yeah, because I think we have a core of some tremendous, you know, scientific minds with tremendous experience, but to bring in the, the lay folks, the, the users of the park, to round out the, the batch of stakeholders.
Anybody else have any strong opinions, one way or the other?
I was in a closed session, so I can't really.
We asked the same questions.
I asked your question.
I defer to you guys as well, I wasn't there, so.
You got it.
Okay, so, what two more laymen's it is? Okay.
So those two names, those two names will be on next, next meeting's agenda.
We can reach out to them tomorrow to let them know about the meeting on the 17th. As any member of the public, the, the meeting will be open to the public, so everyone can attend, but, but those two should specially attend.
I think you should notify the chairman, Mr. Hoffman, Dr. Hoffman, as to what the situation is, that these two people will be joining the committee, and that they could participate at the 17th meeting.
What are these two names? Jim Dunn Levy and Sue Forstmann.
The, Mr. Terrence, the meeting, Thursday night's meeting in Rota is, is, is open to the public, correct?
Yes, all meetings are open to the public, the public may not participate necessarily, but.
Okay. And then the, the second item that I had, there was an event recently in Teaneck presented by our state senator, the Senate Majority Leader, New Jersey Senate President Sweeney, along with Senator Bob Gordon, talking about the Sweeney Property Tax Relief Plan. It's, there's, there's two different property tax, or two different tax relief plans being floated right now in Trenton. Governor Christie's proposal speaks very specifically about certain property, income tax reductions. The plan being put forth by, by the Senate President Sweeney speaks directly to property tax relief, and I think that's something that's become very close to, to all of our hearts. And I'd like to, to just share this resolution, and see if it's something that this council would endorse and, and send on to, to our legislators. Whereas property taxes in New Jersey consistently rank as the highest in the nation, with an average adjusted property tax bill of $7,519, and whereas that exceeds more than $10,000 in Teaneck, whereas since both Governor Christie and Senate President Sweeney have both advanced competing plans to cut taxes, local officials should support the plan that best meets the pressing need to reduce the property tax burden of their constituents, and whereas Governor Christie's plan provides for a 10% across-the-board state income tax cut, which would be phased in over a three-year period, Senate President Sweeney's proposal would, through a 10% state income tax, property tax credit claimed on the state income tax return, reduce by 10% the tax burden of all New Jersey homeowners earning less than $250,000 a year, and whereas the Governor Christie's proposal provides 52% of the tax relief to the richest 5% of New Jerseians, while Senate President Sweeney's proposal provides the greatest tax relief to middle-class taxpayers, focusing, focusing 100% on tax relief on the 95% of New Jersey families with incomes below $250,000 a year. And whereas the average annual household income in Teaneck is, and we will fill in that blank, and the average net property tax bill is, and we will fill in that blank, meaning Governor Christie's plan would result in an average tax cut of only, and we will fill in that blank, while Senate President Sweeney's plan would provide an average savings of, and we will fill in that blank. Be it therefore resolved, the governing body of Teaneck hereby urges the passage of Senate President Sweeney's Property Tax Relief Plan, since this plan alone grants real tax relief to middle-class taxpayers in desperate need of a tax cut, and furthermore urges Governor Christie to support and sign such a measure into law, the clerk is directed to forward true copies of this resolution to Governor Christie, Senate President Sweeney, Assembly Speaker Oliver, and our District 37 legislators as well. So I made copies for everyone. I think if we can, you know, take a look at just filling in the blanks that make it Teaneck-specific, but this is something that can have a, a real impact for, for our residents, for a tremendous number of, of our residents. There is, I think, one, one issue, the 10% property tax credit, which would be a credit against state income taxes, does cap at $1,000. Where the, the average property tax bill across the state is 7,500, that would result in a $750 tax credit. Unfortunately, in Teaneck, the average property tax bill is in excess of $10,000, and so most property owners in Teaneck would be held to that $1,000 cap, and so if we were to modify this at all, it may be to, to just move that cap up a little, there's a very big difference between Burton County and Salem or Cumberland County, where those averages are very, very different.
Do we have four knotting heads?
What, to fill it in tonight, or fill it in?
To have it, to have it, to have the clerk fill it in.
That's fine.
To put on the, on the consent agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, great. New business, 2012 reorganization meeting.
Mayor, I looked at that, just in case, if you have any questions, an attorney, or you want to schedule a time, or?
Did we schedule a time? Is it during the day, or is it during?
Yeah, when is July?
Can we reach out? July 1st is a Sunday, so if we can reach out to the candidates, I'd like to make sure that all schedules are.
They're right here.
Yeah, I know.
Can we do this now?
Reorganization must take place July 1st.
It has to take place July 1st, but it can happen any time.
July 1st, correct.
So whether there's worship obligations or other concerns.
Dr. Pruitt, do you prefer the afternoon or the evening?
I think.
Afternoon.
Afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay, afternoon, afternoon, afternoon.
Four o'clock, is that okay?
Four, does that work for everyone?
Three.
Three? We have a three, we have a four?
Will that conflict with Jamin's church?
No, two, anything after two is fine. Oh, well, it's first Sunday, maybe four o'clock would be better, yeah.
Okay.
All right, four?
Yeah, sure.
What, what happens in this session? We all say, what do you do?
You get sworn in.
You get sworn in.
There's more than just, there's more than just where it.
We vote on the mayor, we vote on the deputy mayor, you get sworn in, you take the oath of office.
Yeah, when, when the meeting begins, Teaneck does not have a mayor or deputy mayor, the clerk actually administers the meeting until such time as the oath of office are administered, then the seven impaneled members of council elect one of themselves mayor and deputy mayor. At that point, the mayor takes control of the meeting. The agenda typically includes appointments of township attorney, township prosecutor, and a few other positions of appointed professionals, and then hopefully a lot of well-wishing from friends and family.
4:00 PM. Is everybody agreed for 4:00 PM? Speak now, forever hold.
Yeah, I agree with 4:00 PM. The one other thing I wanted to add to this, and, and I think we should at least put it in, in our minds right now, is that we should come up with a retreat date as well. You know, summer's going to get very busy, and if we start doing it in the middle of July, end of July, it's going to end up being August or September, and then, and I think that goals and objectives for a council is very important, and we've had retreats in the past, but if we can at least talk as a, as a, as a unit, as far as what we can agree on, and move forward some of those goals and objectives, I think it would create a better working relationship.
Can we instruct the clerk to send out some dates?
Sure. I just, I mean, you guys all know that I'm pregnant, and I'm due July 26th.
That's why I wanted to do the reorg, the reforge.
In terms of retreats and, and stuff like that, I'll try to make myself as available as possible, but my first obligation will be to my child. But I did have a conversation with Mr. Terrence today about how I may participate remotely, you know, while I'm maternity leave, so he is looking into some options, and, you know, I will still be here to serve the public, but he's looking into some options to see how I can do that, and also take care of my first priority.
I think that, that, as your colleagues, we will make every accommodation for you, and we are very happy to have your input, as well as your happy occasion. Okay, that's a reorg meeting.
I think that makes, that makes a majority of us that became parents while on council.
I know. I watched it happen.
Okay, communications, committee reports? No?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
As the mayor previously stated, this weekend is clean and green in the township of Teaneck. We have six, seven different sites slated for volunteers. We have Coolidge Park on Saturday, Brooks Park on Saturday, and Argonne Park on Saturday. All of these are pretty well-staffed, however, we could use some additional hands at Brooks Park. Cleanup will be from 9:00 to 12:00. On Sunday, there is an opportunity at Brett Park Cleanup. Right now, we have nobody listed, so we're looking for a flood of people to come out and help us at Brett Park, and Turhune Park, and we have a good crew slated for the burial grounds, and for the municipal green, so use those.
Oh, don't, don't do that.
We have selected seven places.
This is not the time.
Those are the places we're doing.
Not the time. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And you can either reach Mr. Abasi via email or phone, and I can be reached via email or phone after 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Council listed items.
One, I have one other committee report. The youth advisory board would like to come in on March 24th to do follow-up to the youth forum.
March, or March?
I mean, on May, sorry, May 29th, rather.
May 29th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let us know about DC.
DC, yeah, follow-up to DC as well as the youth forum.
Excellent.
Is that all?
I'm fine, as long as we don't have a heavy agenda. Do we have a heavy agenda that evening, or no?
I don't think so.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. Okay, now, council is township garage sale.
All right, I know you're going to poo-poo it.
Yes.
And I say it just to you, Mr. Mayor, because you told me you're going to poo-poo it.
I hereby poo-poo.
But let, let me just tell you the, let me just tell you the genesis, and then you can, and then you could, it was suggested to me by a resident that since we don't have bulk pickup anymore in Teaneck, that wouldn't it be a nice idea if the community got together, maybe at the Rota Center, put some tables out, everyone get a small little spot, and have a community-together garage sale, where, where, you know, it'll be, everyone will know, oh, Teaneck is having their community garage sale. Other towns do have it, I saw in New Milford, when I was growing up, signs about it, and this way, if it rains, they can go inside, they can set up the tables in there, we can have rules as far as cleaning it up.
Before I say no, or before everybody says no, I don't know if, I'm not speaking for my colleagues, but I told you I wasn't in favor of this. If you could get the policy and procedures that other towns did, so that we could look at it and try to emulate it, then maybe I would consider it. But right now, I just think that it looks like and sounds like a logistical nightmare, that, you know, I don't, I don't.
A big hot mess.
Actually, I think it sounds.
It's a pretty good idea, actually, but we don't have to reinvent, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. I think getting the, the manual from another municipality would not be a bad idea. In government, we try not to reinvent things from scratch.
The way New Milford does it, at least the way they've done it in the past, they don't have it on town property. Everyone just knows that it's garage sale day, and everyone has, or a large percentage of homes happen to have garage sales that day, so I think that's very different than the, the way you shared it.
My only fear is, is like, people bring their stuff to the Rota Center, and then just say bye. Like, that's, that's my only fear.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, our, our block, as well as other block associations, have community garage sales, where each individual household is responsible for their own stuff, so they bring it out to their own lawn, and then they drag it back.
All right, I think the mayor made a great suggestion, I will.
People are likely to clean it up when it's on their own lawn.
Exactly.
Also suggest, actually Naomi Kramer knows some things about this, so she can't speak now because it's not the time, but she.
I will reach out to Naomi and try to get her help.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I like Adam's idea, let's just have a community garage sale wherever you are.
Okay, that's fine. I'm in support of that.
Yeah, and that's the way New Milford does it, so if you could actually reach out to New Milford and find out, because I think they have, or we technically have a requirement for a garage sale, and I believe it's.
No, there's no permit.
Or is it just if you have more than a certain amount?
No.
Isn't there some ordinance relating to? Because people aren't allowed to have a garage sale every week, are they?
There's no, there's no posting.
Hold on, guys, we can't hear the clerk speak, thank you.
There's no permit required, you're allowed four per year.
Four per year.
And there's, there's no advertising on township property, poles, curbs, or anything like that. You have to advertise privately to the paper on private property.
Right. So we could look at what rules they suspend, because I know people there put up signs, and, you know, it's kind of festive-looking around town, but then people clean up their own garbage.
But I get, you're asking that the township advertise this.
Well, my original concept was to have the one central place at the Rota Center. This way, in case it rains, all the tables can be brought in, but some things evolved. I'll get more information, I'll work with some of the public, and we'll be back at the next meeting to give you more information.
Great, court security?
Court security. I mean, I brought it up when we were discussing the budget. As you know, this has been an issue. I was handed a few articles of different, I guess, alleged criminals that came through the Teneck court system, and it's just concerning. The question is, is there some small steps that can be made initially to?
I mean, without speaking about it, I think the manager did address this and had a meeting?
Yes, we have, we are starting to address this issue. I had a meeting on Thursday with the committee, Court Security Committee, and we discussed some security improvements, and you'll start to see them soon. We're having a demo, I believe, on Thursday for magnetometers. We're going to be deploying in the hallway, and there's some other items to control traffic in the hallway that we're going to purchase as well. I've already put in a purchase order for those. It's going to require, you know, additional officers, we're going to have to have.
Can I just interrupt? Is the issue bringing people in? Is that what the issue is, is bringing people?
The issue is access control in general, you know, creating secure areas where people are properly screened and keeping them in those secure areas, so.
What I'm saying is, as being the.
Isn't there also some issue about having a secure place where the judge can go?
Yeah, those, I mean, that's an issue that we're not going to be able to solve right now, the issue of, you know, having the proper facilities for the judge, the proper entrance.
There's things that we can do with our current physical plans. It is, and then there's other things that we cannot do.
The reason for my question is.
Mr. Mayor, you should be aware that court security is under the jurisdiction of the state courts, and the county's, the assignment judge has issued a manual and criteria as to what the court has to meet, and it's in the process of being implemented.
Okay, my only question is, is can't you do what you did at the county, is just have the video court set up, if that's the issue?
It's not so much the issue of moving prisoners like that.
Yes, it's not an issue of that. I mean, you can't do that for every case, you know, have video, there's a, you know, people have an opportunity to appear for the judge, so. But we're working on it, and we have a committee formed, and I think we're well on our way to, you know, putting some of the recommendations into place. We had the Sheriff's Department come down, and they conducted a survey of our facilities here, and they provided us with a report as well, so we're working on it, and I'll let you know, I'll keep you informed of where we're at with.
I'm sorry, Councilman Katz?
No, I have confidence in the manager, as being a former undersheriff for the Sheriff Department and captain of the Police Department, if he says he's working on it, I think we're in good shape. The third item is, I want to bring up the bus shelters also. I have, it's missing. I happen to agree that there should be one on the Chesna Plaza, and I understand the merchants concerned. As a merchant, you know, we've all gotten complaints about obstructions, or, you know, whether it's a tree or anything blocking the store, that's certainly not conducive for business. And in a time right now, like where Cedar Lane is unfortunately losing a lot of merchants, we want to try to be as helpful as possible, but I also think that this could be a help to the merchants by providing shelter for residents, to giving them a place to go. And maybe there's a balance that we can strike between the merchant that this will be blocking and the bus shelter. So if you can, if it's okay with you, Mr. Manager, if you can possibly revisit this location?
Yeah, I think that, you know, in previous meetings, I addressed this issue, the town gets five free shelters per year. In deploying the shelters, we did a little study, we looked at the different locations, and we looked at the entire town, we looked at all of the locations in town. Three shelters are going on, I believe two shelters are going on Teneck Road, and three shelters are going on Cedar Lane.
Where on Cedar are they going?
You're going to have one shelter at Cedar and Garrison for westbound, you have one shelter at Elm and Cedar for eastbound, you'll have one shelter at Cedar and Grange for eastbound as well. So there's a lot of bus stops in town where there are people, and we see people sitting at that particular location. I'm discussing it with the Cedar Lane Management Group, and we're looking at it, but for right now, we don't have a shelter.
Right. What was the comment about 13 shelters that he mentioned? What was that?
Well, there's shelters that we put in to New Jersey Transit to be replaced. There's, there's some of the 20-year-old shelters, they're going to replace the shelters. So we're not getting 13 shelters now. There's, we're getting five shelters right now. We're also putting a shelter at Teneck and Bogart, and we're putting a shelter at Teneck and Selvage. So we have five shelters, we've allocated the locations for those shelters, and we're moving forward. I'll continue to work with Cedar Lane Management Group to see if at some point we can put a shelter at that location. But I reviewed it with the Police Department, and there's some concern about putting a shelter there. Shelter really doesn't fit at that location. There'll be, there'll be a shelter east, there'll be a shelter one block east of the plaza, and there'll be a shelter about two blocks, no, there'll be a shelter one block west of the plaza, and a shelter two blocks east of the plaza. But that's something I'm reviewing, and we'll take another look at it when we have an opportunity to place another shelter.
Okay, so if we get more shelters, though, then, and this is our 2011 allocation of the five shelters, or 2012?
It's our 2012 allocation of shelter.
And where'd we do it? The 2011 ones weren't where?
We didn't do any shelters in 2011. They don't, you don't get a credit. They give you five shelters, and you get out of free.
Okay.
That's it?
Yes, thank you. One more, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I sent the email to everybody yesterday. There's some residents on Riverview that are concerned about some possible development going on.
It's a board of adjustment matter.
Yes, and it's not even a Teneck board of adjustment.
New Milford, right?
It's New Milford, correct. The question is, do we want to reach out and request copies of, as a town, send a letter asking for copies of what's being proposed there, since it will have an ancillary negative.
Does the township get noticed as though we were within the 200 feet?
We received, we received, township received a notice from the applicant in New Milford. It was in our packet last, I'm going to say Thursday or so, towards the end of the packet, and it spells out the relief that the applicant is looking for from the New Milford Board of Adjustment.
So are you suggesting we have someone monitor that first hearing?
I don't know, what is council's feelings? I mean, it will have a, I don't know what's being proposed, that's the honest truth. I only know what some of the residents.
There's overwhelming, there's overwhelming non, I mean, not support for this project to go forward with, from the residents, that's what I understand.
You know what the project is?
From Teneck residents or from New Milford residents? Right, do we have any idea or any feel for, because it's a New Milford board, do we have any idea how New Milford feels about it?
Well, I think that one of the things. This has been, this has been an issue a few years ago here, which the, it was dealt with, the area is in a flood zone, which has impact on Teneck residents and New Milford residents. It's not, they can't just go ahead and do it and not expect that we're going to be.
I think that we're going to be in opposition of it. I mean, I pretty much think if it was the same way it was in 2006 when it came up, that it'll be the same way it is now, that we'll just have to figure out from.
But we don't even know we're opposition of.
Anything happening there is what they're going to have opposition to.
Right, so my request.
Mr. Mayor, my reading of the notice, and I contacted the attorney who represents the applicant, this has to do with the New Bridge, New Bridge Road Restaurant. They're buying two houses in New Milford, they're going to knock down the two houses and create a larger parking lot and expand the restaurant by about 600 square feet. They require a use variance. If the council is inclined to have the council be represented to oppose the application, what's going to be required is the hiring of a planner, hiring of a traffic expert, and an attorney to defend, to go against the project, if that's what you want. That will be, you know, representing the neighbors or representing the town itself, but that's what you're involved in, in terms of opposition. I mean, going and saying Teneck is opposed, you could do that by a letter, but that will have very little impact on the Board of Adjustment of New Milford.
And we also don't know specifically what we're opposed to, meaning, it sounded like, from what you just gave a description of, is that they're doing one bad, which is increasing, or what's perceived as bad to the residents of Teneck, which is increasing the capacity of the restaurant, meaning more people. But they're doing one good, which is increasing the parking lot capacity, because that's something that the residents have complained about, that their entire block has become a parking lot.
What is having that flat, large surface do when there's floods?
Yeah, no, it's a surface in the flood zone.
Right, so they're doing one extra bad.
It exacerbates water runoff and all sorts of other issues.
Right.
Now, does that water that would normally seep in and run back to the river, does it run into the foundations of Teneck?
So they're doing too bad?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Right.
Mayor, if I could, maybe I'll, what I'll do is, if the council is in agreement, maybe I'll try to dig up that notice and find out what's going on, is that all right?
And can we give Councilman Stern permission to reach out to New Milford and get plans or whatever is needed? Okay, yeah, okay. So can we ask?
Counsel, you really don't have time. This matter is scheduled, I understand, it was carried to June at the request of the neighbors. If you're serious about opposition, we have to go get the plans, we can't wait to send a letter and then get the plans, and then have the plans looked at and analyzed and have a report back to you by May 24th as to what you're dealing with. So if you want, we can go to New Milford, get a copy of the plans, get them, have our engineering department look at them, have our planner look at them, and then make a report back to council as to what you're dealing with.
Yes, yes.
Before we go expending a whole ton of money on.
Well, you got to go get the plans, you have to have the planner look at it, you have to have the engineer look at it, et cetera.
I'm in favor of that, if that was a motion.
Great, thank you.
So I'm authorized to go do that?
Yes. Township managers' report?
No report.
Township attorneys' report?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Dr. Pruitt? I need a, I need a ride.